And then if we defer?
If we defer the class, based on hiring the remaining classes, we will still be over by an additional 4.4 million from where we are currently.
Okay, and then if we-
Ms. Perry, just a point of correction.
Hold my time.
I will, hold your time. The personnel that are going to be retreaded into the academy, are they currently on payroll or they're not on payroll?
The 11 people?
Yes.
Sandy Joe McCarthy of the department, they are on payroll. They're back 100 percent, and the doctors have cleared them to go back into a class.
But they're currently receiving pay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Perry.
Thank you. Okay, so if we hire a class of 20, what does that, where does that put us?
If we hire a class of 20, it will, over the course of the rest of the fiscal year, it'll increase the department's existing deficit by 6.2 million dollars.
And then if we defer?
If we defer the class, there will be 4.4 million dollars over.
So it's the same thing, if we defer, we achieve the same result. Then if we hire 20 in January and defer in February, then what?
We will still be 4.7 million dollars farther in the red than we currently are.
We just push it, push it, push it over another month?
Yes.
What about the associated costs?
The associated costs, the costs that are not represented in the cost of actually hiring the class, which is the salaries for the officers that enter the academy, the equipment costs, and then the benefits costs, that's the cost of the department being over-projected deployment.
You know, cost containment is cost containment, and I thought we were trying to contain costs so that we can preserve our future, so what are we doing here today? Hold my time. Hold.
Time's on hold, time's on hold, time's on hold.
From a budgetary aspect, it's hard to defend the January class. The police department has brought forth operational needs that go beyond the budgetary needs currently defined. The chief believes that he can find efficiencies within the department to mitigate the additional cost of hiring the January class, and they have stated that by not running a January, or not running a new class through the academy for three months creates an operational impact. I'll have to defer.
Would it be, maybe I can make a request, can we, today's what, Wednesday? Can we get the chief to give us an answer as to where the money's going to come from to pay for this by Friday since we're going to adjournment next week? Can we do that? I mean, I don't think it's an unfair question to ask, like, where's the money going to come from? Can we do that? Can I make a motion to do that?
Ms. Perry, are you looking at the 80.3 or the 70.4?
Whatever the cost of the rolled-back proposal is, all I want to know is where the money's going to come from to pay for it, that's all. I'd like to just know that before I vote on it, that's all.
District 11 Councilmember Bill Rosendahl brings up the possibility of training the airport police at the academy as a way of subsidizing police classes.
First of all, I'm strongly in favor of that class going forward, I think it's great. I think we need to give our chief all the support and respect that he has earned over 32 years as an officer in our city. But I got a way for us to keep the classes going. There's 100 slots at the airport that would more like their own police and the training at the academy. The Bratton strategy of them all going there was brilliant, so all of our police are on the same wavelength about their training and they're able to do what they need to do. With those 100 slots, LALA will pay for them. There's no money issue here, they provide the money. So as you saw in pepper, Ms. Perry's neat question about, you know, where's the money going to come from? Put as many potential LALA recruits in that mix if you have any problem on the other side of funding from the LAPD. I also suggest you take a deep look at the port, Ms. Hahn would probably be able to answer that, about where are the port police in terms of recruits and needs, and of course, they have their own independent ability to fund it as well. And the third point, which Mr. Smith and I were just chatting about, is there's only two training academies in the state, from what I gather, and we should go, or in Southern California.
There are actually 44 academies throughout the state.
Oh, wow, but what about in our region here?
In our region, I believe we have four.
Four?
Yes.
Okay, well, maybe we could be more marketing, you know, we've got 87 other towns in the county, and we probably have 160 towns in the region, and, you know, to get trained by the LAPD Training Academy is a prestige for anybody, so maybe that could be another additional. But I already got you 100 slots there from LALA, I'm sure there's something from the port. The goal would be to continue the training, continue to keep the academy open.
Speaking of economic hardship and a reported uptick in crime, District 7 Councilmember Richard Alarcon says this particular recruit training class will not change our budget situation significantly.
Members, I think we should move forward. I think we should, I don't think we have the votes today, but we need to hire these cops. In fact, there's been a slight increase in crime. It was only a matter of time that the economy would set in to such an extent that people would do things they don't normally do, and then that means that you still see an increase in burglaries and thefts from vehicles and those types of crimes that increased during economic hardship. They suggested, Mr. Rosendahl, with regard to the airport police, been there, tried that, we got sued, we lost. We cannot, we cannot, we cannot suggest to the public that the services that they need in their communities is going to be somehow supplanted by adding or training additional officers at the airport. The airport cops are fully funded to work at the airport, but that doesn't do a darn thing for my district in Pacoima or anywhere else, so we don't want to shuck and jive the public. We want to tell them straightforward, either we support the additional cops in recruit training academy in January, or we don't. That's the simple question, and you can get all the information you want about dollars, you either support it or you don't. I support it, I hope we can get it done. I think the mayor has already compromised to the extent that is appreciated by this council with the definition of the goal to address the attrition issue, that's, and allow us to reduce the force slightly. But to do anything further is to diminish the quality of our police force. Now is not the time to do that, I don't know when it is, but I don't believe the sky is falling to that extent for this particular recruit class, I don't think it's going to change our budget situation significantly. So with that, I would urge that we support this, whether we put it off to hear from the police department later, that's a decision that can be made. I'll vote against it, because I don't think I need that information to know that we need an additional class.
So we're going to break this into two, Madam Clerk, we're breaking this into two segments?
Yes, and just for clarification, the first vote would be then on Ms. Perry's motion to have a report back on Friday from the CAO and the police department on the source of funding.
Okay, on that matter, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That matter passes, and the second phase of that?
The second part is the committee report as amended by Councilmember Smith, Zine, and Garcetti motion.
Very well, on that matter, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
Very well, that matter passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 24 for Friday's meeting gave Councilmember Perry an opportunity to have her question answered.
And this will be a report from the Los Angeles Police Department.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll just ask my questions, I want you to hold my time.
Hold your time once again.
I asked the other day where the money was going to come for, from, and I'd like to get an answer to that question.
Mr. Chair?
Los Angeles Police Department, as part of the reorganization and the future savings through drop and the type of promotions we'll make after drop, initially save about $450,000 to $500,000. As far as the rest of that money, I have begun, I've been in charge of the budget now for about two weeks, I've begun a line-by-line review of every item in our budget to determine where we can have cost savings, to try to-
Mr. Chair, can you speak up?
I'm trying.
Members can't hear.
Okay. I'll start over. As part of our reorganization and then the impact of drop, we will save about $450,000 in the next six months from the budget. As far as the remainder of the money, I've instituted a line-by-line review of every item in the budget as to see where we can save any, save money. One of the items we expect to save substantial amounts is in the early retirement, because we have a number of civilians, upwards of 200, that have, we believe, will be retired through that process, which will probably save us $4 million, I think.
Can I get some response from the CAO on this question? Where's the money going to come from? Hold my time.
Well, at the end of the day, whatever is not made up through efficiencies in the department, we will have to pay for out of our reserve. But I have to say that in the last several days, we've had a very willing partner with the department who has shared with us in a very transparent manner how they're going to try to find these savings. You know, it's going to be a difficult task ahead of them, but I'm confident that they're doing everything they can to mitigate that.
With the nine-to-one vote that took place on Wednesday, December 9th, the police department's January 2010 academy class will go forward. On Wednesday, your Los Angeles City Council considered item 27, the funding of the Boyle Heights City Hall. Located in his District 14, Councilmember Jose Wezar talks about earthquake damage to the building and asks that the project move ahead as originally funded.
There is an item in this report that is the Boyle Heights City Hall. The city purchased this building a few years back, and in 2008, there was an earthquake that damaged the building. BOE tells us that we need about $2 million to correct the problems that occurred because of the damage caused during the earthquake. At the last minute, two weeks ago, at the Budget and Finance Committee, there was an amendment made to have the project moved forward without the $2 million, and that raised some concern to me today when I realized that happened, and so I would ask that we move back and adopt the ITGA report, which actually stated this, it stated that the funding gap of $2 million can be addressed as part of the 210-211 budget. Now, in speaking to Mr. Parks' staff, they mentioned that his concern was that we should do a value engineering report to determine if we need the $2 million. My suggestion is this, that we do the value engineering report, and we recommend to BOE to do the value engineering report, and we still have time to get that information, so when the budget comes up in 210-11, we know whether it's going to be 1 million, 500,000, 2 million, but I'd like to move forward today on this item so that we could move forward with the items that need to be fixed at the Boyle Heights City Hall.
As vice chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, District 12 Councilmember Greg Smith explains what he believes to be the appropriate way to move forward on the Boyle Heights City Hall project.
I think what we did in the Budget and Finance Committee was the appropriate thing, and we said, "Go ahead and address that in the 2010 budget," which you just said, "Okay," but then now you want the ITGA budget instead, which included that money instead. I think the appropriate way to go, and I know Mr. Parks feels this way, is that we should go forward with a plan, do that analysis, and then address the actual amount, whatever it may be, into 2010 budget. That would be the appropriate way to budget for something new in these very troubled times. So I would say to you that the appropriate way is to do what the Budget Committee recommended rather than the ITGA Committee, because that took into account the fact that we need that additional money, but we don't know exactly how much it is yet, and really to take a look at it in that text context, rather than just taking a blind shot at it now and saying, "We'll go back and adjust later," downward, if it can be downward, or upward, and that's, so we're incrementally approving money, and that's not the best way to do that. So I would say to you, either go back to the Budget and Finance Report, or then hold this matter until January, till Mr. Parks gets back, and as the chairman of the committee, with the respect he is due, we bring it back up into the committee, and you were there, as you mentioned to me, when we took it up in the committee, so you can have this debate rather than on the floor, in the committee where it belongs. So I would say either one of those two choices makes sense, either refer it back or take the original committee report, which was do it in the 2010 budget, that's the appropriate way to do that.
We have not been consistent, according to Jose Wezar, who explains why his district has been short-changed in the past, and doesn't want it to happen in the case of the Boyle Heights City Hall.
I'm concerned because during the past fiscal years, I've given up several of my dollars in my district to make up for a budget gap, and each time I find myself in this position, in the position that I'm in right now, I say, "Let's move forward without the funding and we'll get back to it." The fact of the matter is, I have a couple of projects on where we don't know where we're going to get that money. I've been short-changed each and every time, I want to do what's good for the whole council and not move forward. We have the funds approved already by the Bond Financing Committee, we also have their evaluation. I say, "We approve it, we move forward when the," and we don't have to decide on this for the 10, the budget year 210-11, we're not going to say we're going to use the $2 million, but we will have the value engineering information, so then the budget year 210-11, the deliberations that happened for that fiscal year, we have the information before us, we could scale down if we have to.
District 7 Councilmember Richard Alarcon brings up the historical aspects of the proposed Boyle Heights City Hall project.
This is a historical building, and to say that we're only going to build one story of this building is a shun on the community of Boyle Heights. Now, I'm not from Boyle Heights, I've got some family buried in the cemetery over there, but notwithstanding that, if they did this in any community to a historical building with such prominent history, I would be very insulted, but I think this building is worthy of designating sufficient money to make it whole, so that we can make history whole. And I think we ought to, we ought to listen to Mr. Wezar, this is a special request from a singular council member, and too many times in this council, we have listened to individual council members and adhered to their requests regarding something very personal and personal to the community of their district. I think Mr. Wezar is in a better position to negotiate this process through than some bean counters, and that's exactly what we're dealing with. This would be a disparaging statement on the community of Boyle Heights, and I think it's wrong for us to do this to that community. Let's make this building whole.
Contending that some of the information just heard from the table is incorrect, Councilmember Wezar reads into the record from the original report.
This is what the original ITGS report says. The cost of, and bear with me, I don't like reading word by word, but we just have to clarify the record. The cost of this project is estimated at $19.9 million, consisting of acquisitions, 6.4, seismic repairs, 7 million, and tenant improvements, 6.5 million, that's the original project. The approved funding for this project totaled $17.9 million, leaving a funding gap of $2 million. The gap is the result of increased seismic work needed to fix damage caused by the July 2008 No Hills earthquake, 1.5, and replacement funding, replacement funding of $500,000 in CDBG funds that were pre-programmed from this project. Now, listen, the funding gap can be addressed as part of the 2010-11 budget, it does say that in the ITGS report. Right now, when Mr. Smith asked you if it said that in here, you said no, and you said it said that in the Budget and Finance Report. Let me read to you the Budget and Finance Report. Instruct the city administrative officer and chief legislative analyst to work with Council District 14 and affected city departments to value engineering the remaining tenant improvements to eliminate the $2 million funding gap identified in construction projects report and remain within the $17.9 million approved funding. Ladies and gentlemen, the reason you do engineering report is because you try to save money, and this is directing us to eliminate $2 million and only work within $17.9 million. I understand that, I think that's a good thing to do, to try to find money and savings where we can. The problem, as I see it, is that we're eliminating those $2 million, $500,000 of which are CDBG funds that we want to reprogram, and the other 1.5 millions that we need to do the additional floor. I'd rather say that we're going to find that money in the fiscal year 210-11 than totally engineer down and be direct that you're not going to get those additional floors, be able to fix those additional floors, and that be, that's where we're starting from. Now, those are what the two reports say. Now, when you were asked if the Budget and Finance Report said that we're going to seek that money in fiscal year 210-11, the Budget and Finance Report does not say that, it simply says eliminate those $2 million. Now, let me ask your Bureau of Engineering, again, explain to us what value engineering is and what we do when we go through that process.
Well, I make a distinction between value engineering and scope reduction. When you value engineer, you're looking to do essentially the same scope that you were doing previously, but you might reduce the quality of materials, you might consider a different building system. In this case, we really would be talking about scope reduction, we would have to take areas that we had designated to be completed and just not complete them.
Thank you.
And we're quite willing to look at that, but that's really what we're talking about.
Thank you, and I stand by this, you know, I do compromise, it's, you know, politics is the art of compromising, and we do have, I do a lot of compromising, I think. In this case, there's a lot of reason to believe, the way this was handled, the information that's put out there, there's no reason why we should not move forward with the original language, and, you know, I hadn't even thought about the historical significance of this business, building, Mr. Alarcon, but I think the Boyle Heights community does deserve to have this building preserved and not be short-changed in any way. Colleagues, I ask for your support on the ITGS report, the ITGA report, whatever that is.
All right, that was our last speaker on this round. Madam Clerk, can you please clarify for our votes?
Council has two reports before it. First one is Budget and Finance, and then also moved was the ITGA report.
What are we voting on?
The first vote would be for the Budget and Finance Committee report.
Colleagues asked for a no vote on that.
On this particular part, open the roll, close the roll.
Wow.
Tabulate the vote.
Four ayes, six noes. That fails, now the ITGA report is before council.
Colleagues, I ask that we do a roll call that we have our colleagues in here for this vote.
A verbal roll call?
Well, no, we need a, oh, you're here, Mr., okay, okay. Okay, thank you. No, no. Vote on the ITGA motion.
Mr. Wezar, on that particular matter, it's up for a vote, open the roll.
Yes.
We're voting on the second part of that. Is there any clarification, once again, please, Madam Clerk?
And this is on the ITGA report.
On this item, Mr. Wezar, thank you, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. All right, open the roll, close the roll, okay, open the roll, okay, now close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, two noes.
Mr. Wezar, you win on that particular vote.
So, the Boyle Heights City Hall project will go forward at the original amount of $19 million. LA City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending December 11th, 2009. On behalf of Camilo Chilcot and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
We're all in this together.
It's our duty to serve veterans and military families who serve their country in the most difficult ways imaginable. Together, we can say thank you in so many ways. Small acts of kindness mean more than anything. With our support, veterans and military families can face even the most difficult challenges. Let's honor their service with ours.
LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you. This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you. This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you. This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry. We need your presence. It is now 10:15. If we do not get a quorum shortly, we will adjourn the meeting. I can ask the Sergeant Arms to inquire. I believe that there's a committee still in session in a genuine environment. If we can ask all the members to come down from that meeting, please. Thank you.
This is our final call for council members Alarcon, Cardness, and Perry.
Well, we can't hold it, the holding on the desk is calling something special. Do you want it to be held on the desk? We just voted on it, should I reconsider it? Okay, all right, no problem. Next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda, item 53 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
All right, anybody wishing to call 53 special? Fifty-three? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 54 through 58 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, if there's no objection, consideration, those are before us. Items 54 through 58, do we have any cards on those?
There are cards on 54, 56, and 5... Just on item 54.
Okay, I have a card on 57 up here, too. So there's 57 and 54? Yep, all right, so if we can take up 55, 56, and 58, if nobody wishes to call those special, then go ahead and prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, those are approved. We can go back to the ordinances, now that we have 12 members. That would be items one through three, seven, 26 through 32, and 34. Okay, please prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Mr. Zein, you have an introduction?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have with us this morning students from Taft High School, deaf students from Taft High School, deaf hard-of-hearing students from Taft High School, who are here today, and they're here discussing issues pertinent to the deaf population, and I know Councilmember Tony Cardness is very involved in this, the aspect of pregnancy, teenage pregnancy, and sexually transmitted disease. They're here discussing that, and trying to learn more how to prevent that in the deaf and hard-of-hearing impaired community of Los Angeles. So I want to acknowledge them, so please stand and take a bow, the Taft High School student population that's here today. We welcome you. Thank you for coming by. And Councilmember Tony Cardness has a very aggressive program to help educate the Los Angeles population regarding the hearing impaired and deaf population of our city. I want to congratulate Tony for his hard work on that, and thank the students for coming by and visiting with us, and hope you enjoy your day here at Los Angeles City Hall, all the way from Taft High School in Woodland Hills, California. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We have a request due to time on item 39. Take that just before general public comment, without objection. I'd like to recognize Mr. Labange on item 39.
Members, if you read in the newspaper some months ago, it talked about basically a trade organization saying mammograms should not be for women until after they're 50. Our committee, along with Janice Han, seconded a motion to say that this is wrong and not right. We have with us this morning Dr. Christy Russell, oncologist from USC Norris, as well as Kelly Hawkins, from the Commission on the Status of Women. Would you please sit at the center table for brief remarks? Dr. Russell, if you could tell the council how important that we should make our voice loud, that this decision is wrong, and how important it is to get a mammogram.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate the honor of being able to sit among you today. I'm a medical oncologist and the co-director of the Breast Cancer Center at USC, and I care for the breast cancer patients at Norris Cancer Hospital, but I also care for the breast cancer patients at Los Angeles County Hospital. And I'm very familiar with what happens when women don't have access to mammography, and in terms of funding in our general population in Los Angeles. And so women at Norris Cancer Hospital, for the most part, are diagnosed with small stage one cancers, and the women at Los Angeles County, for the most part, are diagnosed with stage three or four cancer. And that's within our current recommendations. So the U.S. Preventative Task Force, in my mind, has very wrongly come through with recommendations that women should not begin screening mammograms until the age of 50, and then it's every other year. But what's missed in this is they're saying that women between the age of 40 and 50 may want to get mammograms, but they should discuss it with their physicians first, and that every other year, starting at the age of 50. I'm also on the National Board of Directors for the American Cancer Society, and I'm Chair of the Breast Cancer Advisory Group to the American Cancer Society, who is significantly opposed to these new recommendations to the U.S. Preventative Task Force, and recognize that women will now begin to lose their lives to breast cancer because of them. So shortly, 15% of women will die as a result of these new recommendations if they don't get screening mammograms in their 40s, and that if they go to every other year in their 50s, we can expect at least 15% of women may also, in addition, lose their lives to breast cancer because of that decision. Decision's been made based on mathematical modeling, and not on the real care of patients with cancer. So I would strongly urge this council that they continue to support the current recommendations as put forth by the American Cancer Society, based on the same science that was looked at by the U.S. Preventative Task Force, to say that women should begin, women at routine risk for breast cancer should begin screening mammogram at the age of 40, and that it should be yearly from that point on, until they are so old that the diagnosis of breast cancer would not be treated at that point. So that the recommendation is start at 40, go yearly, and that we do not have a back end on women should stop screening mammograms. If we spend the money for screening, we will save money compared to the money we will spend to treat any woman diagnosed with breast cancer. Appreciate the opportunity, Tom.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. Kelly Hawkins, our Executive Director of Commission on the Status of Women.
Good morning, councilmembers. I think you should definitely all be applauded for the step that you've taken... Thank you. For the steps that you've taken to make sure that your local constituents are aware of the importance of getting tested early on. I think there's a lot of us that are younger women that think we're still invincible, and that this cannot happen to us. I myself have had friends that have been diagnosed, but also, when you look at those that actually qualify for screenings, only a third of them are actually getting mammograms because of lack of access or lack of education. In my prior life, prior to coming to the city, working as an epidemiologist, and even as a student at USC for public health, it was very evident to me that if we do not start to do more education within our communities, especially our communities of color, we will begin to see these epidemics continue to grow. And so, again, it's important that we get the information out to our constituents, our young women, even men as well. I lost an uncle to breast cancer, actually. So this issue hits home for everyone, and so thank you again for the opportunity to really push this issue of early detection.
Thank you very much, and we were joined on the steps with the President of the Commission on the Status of Women, Dr. Wilson. Also, we were joined on the steps by our City Controller, Wendy Gruel, and also Patricia Buskey, who's a board member for the Los Angeles affiliate for the Susan G. Coleman for the Cure Program. But very special guest was Janice Han, and I got to ask Ms. Han to say a few words, and also introduce some.
Ms. Han?
Thank you. Thank you, Tom, for bringing this very serious issue forward, and allowing Los Angeles to go on the record to say that we reject these recommendations, and we think they are dangerous, and we believe they will cause a loss of lives in untold women. In any given year, approximately 186,000 women are diagnosed with breast cancer, and in any year, approximately 40,000 women die of this disease. Breast cancer is the number one cause of cancer death in Hispanic women, and it is the second most common cause of cancer death in white, black, Asian Pacific Islander, and Native American women. This U.S. Preventative Services Task Force recommendation is based on a very strange conclusion, that screening 1,300 women in their 50s to save one life is worth it, but screening 1,900 women in their 40s to save a life is not worth it. This is wrong, this is dangerous, and we know that this is particularly cruel and unfair to the women who die every year when their breast cancer goes undetected. Many of us have personal experiences with women in their 40s who were detected with breast cancer, or have died from breast cancer. These women deserve the best possible preventive care available to them, and you can only get this kind of care if you make sure that you are screened in your 40s, and if it is detected, that is your best chance of survival. We're going to continue to fight to ensure that women have the opportunity to be screened every year in their 40s, and that their health insurance plans will cover those screenings. That is critical and important. We know that every life, whether it's your mother's, your sister's, your daughter's, your friend, Bridgette Labange's life, all these are lives that are worth saving, and they are worth living, and we will fight to reject these recommendations as being wrong and dangerous. Thank you, Tom, for bringing this forward. This is important.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, and I appreciate, Mr. Labange, your leadership on this issue. Cancer is pervasive in our society right now. One of my deputies has cancer and just had a colonoscopy. My sister, who's 62, died of cancer. My brother was 57 and died of cancer. And one of my dear friends, Jackie Guthrie, Arlo Guthrie's wife, we go way back, had breast cancer, but she detected it early by having the tests early. It's as simple as that. I don't understand why they went to age 50 as an idea. I think that it's critical at every point that early detection means opportunities for survival and therapies that keep people going. So bless you for the fight. Thank you, Tom, for your leadership, and your lovely wife, Bridget, who is what I consider a role model, and an inspiration to all of us, with her energy and her commitment, and obviously, her love of you, and the children, and the family. And Bridget, we love you, and thank you for standing up and being out there as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank all members, and thank all members in the public. It is very important, this issue. And thank you, Dr. Russell, Ms. Hawkins. And thank you, Bridget.
Thank you, Bridget. We have two cards from the public on this. First is Donna Perman, out in Van Nuys. Good morning, Ms. Perman.
Thank you, council, for coming up with this. I'm living proof that you do have to have it before age 50. At age 47, I happened to be, I decided to go for a physical. While I was walking around, I said, hey, I might as well have a mammogram, too. And when they had it, they found out that I had stage one breast cancer, and they couldn't even feel it. That's why it's very important that you and women are encouraged to have screenings. I had four chemo appointments and six weeks of radiation in wonderful Hollywood, Garcetti's district, and I met a whole lot of people that had breast cancer, even one in their 30s. So I strongly am against the federal guidelines, and I think women should be encouraged at 40. I'm proof, I was 47, I would have lost probably my breasts if I'd waited till 50. So thank you, City Council.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perman. John Walsh is our last speaker, who is here in council chambers. Mr. Walsh? You going to pass? I'm sorry. On this item? On item number 39, sir? We're on item 39, we take that out of order, and then we'll go to public comment. You want to come forward, on 39, sir? Richard Kearns?
Hey, good morning. As a person with AIDS, I am glad that, I want to rise to support this, and I'm glad that you're taking this action. We need help everywhere, you can't just rely on statistics. You can't just cut back treatment and prevention to take care of budgetary matters. This is important, and I'm glad you did it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kearns. With that, let's go ahead and please prepare the roll on this item, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
As approved. Everything forthwith today. Thank you very much, doctor, and thank you, Bridget, for being here as part of this today. Thank you. We'll go to general public comment. Patrick Weisman is our first speaker, and then Richard Kearns will follow. Good morning, and thank you.
Good morning, councilmembers. Patrick Weisman. Today, I'm going to talk to you guys about the marijuana business again, and about zoning, which you guys don't seem to understand what zoning is. Zoning is the license plate and the DNA of each piece of land in Los Angeles or in California. I cannot have a horse... I cannot have a horse, okay, in West Hollywood, because the zoning doesn't allow me. I can grow grapes on my land, but I can't bottle it. I cannot bottle it unless I take an industrial zoning to put the wine in the bottles. Same thing you're doing with cannabis. You guys are trying to change the zone by letting people, okay, plant cannabis, okay, on zones that you cannot plant. Planting is only in agriculture zone. Mr. Reyes appeared, told Mr. Alakon the other day, that we don't want to do it in the foothill, but the foothill is the only place you can do it. Collectives were meant to be on farms. Mr. Alakon here the other day said that, oh, we want to protect the 136 or the 187 that went by the law. Show me one thing, okay, those dispensaries did by the law. They sold it, it was against the law. They transported it, it was against the law. They weren't compassionate, they made a profit. Okay, so the thing is, you guys got, instead of putting a new layer on this decision you're about to make, you should actually start from scratch. You are constituting a taking. You're taking away our value of our land in the agriculture areas, okay, and you're trying to change another zone. You've been sending your garbage, you've been sending, okay, your dumping, you've been sending your factories, all in our neighborhood. Now that we have a chance to give good jobs in the foothill areas, in agriculture, okay, you're taking it away. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. Weisman. Appreciate your comments this morning. Richard Kearns is next, after that will be Dr. Clyde Williams. Good morning again.
Good morning again. I've given the clerk a copy of my prepared remarks. My name is Richard Kearns. I'm a 58-year-old gay man, living with AIDS, in Los Angeles for more than 20 years, a poet and journalist. I am delighted to announce to you this morning that on Friday, February 12th, 2010, upstairs in the Bradley Conference Center on the 27th floor, we will hold the L.A. City Grassroots Elder HIV/AIDS Advocacy Summit and New Media Training, New Tricks for Old Dogs and Their Allies, sponsored by Councilmember Rosendahl and the City AIDS Office, AIDS Coordinator's Office. HIV'ers over 50 are predicted to double in community prevalence over the next five years. We will constitute nearly 60% of the national HIV-infected population. Everyone treats us as liabilities, when in fact, we are resources, both to ourselves and to our community. However, as a group, I'd also characterize many elder HIV'ers as internet-challenged. The question boils down to this, why should we let ourselves be intimidated by something a nine-year-old can master in a single setting? At this Valentine's Day conference, we intend to build a website from scratch, on which we plan to practice posting videos and text with younger to-dos on hand if needed. We hope to meet all of you and your staffs. We aim to empower 15 to 30 new getting older AIDS advocates, to get them connected, to get them up to speed with new media skills, and to set them loose as watchdogs, as part of our city's extraordinary response to the AIDS plague. Elder HIV'ers already know the ropes. We already know what to do, we already are capable. Double the 1983 Denver Principles apply here. We are already experts, both in HIV/AIDS and in life. The internet is easy. We're needed out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kearns. Dr. Clyde Williams is next. After that, we'll go back to Donna Perman in Van Nuys. Good morning.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Great district to be in. However, today, I want to report a failure of a city organization. It's called the Neighborhood Councils. We have an MOU with an agency called Department of Water and Power, and I always put the "power" as the emphasis. What's happened? The DWP MOU has failed tragically, as shown by the three-part ratepayers, advocate, inspector general, and ombuds person. Why do we need those if we have effective neighborhood councils with an MOU with the DWP? Aren't they communicating? Doesn't seem to be. Doesn't seem to be. However, one of the DWP attorneys once stood up and said, "The interpretation of the MOU is based upon the DWP's interpretation." So practical means three days' notice rather than 30 days. So how can neighborhood councils encourage anyone to go to a solar plan or water plan or any other plans where we know we're not going to get the truth, number one? I spent three hours listening to a snow job where we were supposed to be discussing next year's budget, but we had to discuss ECAF, and we had to discuss other things that had a revision postmarked in three days after that meeting. So we didn't even get a draft of the original budget for ECAF or any of the others. So the basic element is, there's no trust, there's no transparency between the Neighborhood Councils and DWP through the MOU, or between the 4 million Los Angelinos and the people that provide our water and power. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Donna Perman is next in Van Nuys. After that, we'll come back here for Zumadog in Council Chambers.
Yeah, this is Donna. I guess the Van Nuys nutcases had the last laugh. Congratulations, Mr. Corian, and thank you, line-hearted Arlecon. Marion Fogler really wanted to be here, but suffering from sinus drip and asthma and a really bad cough. She's coughing a lot. Mr. Smith, I would love for you to pay my DWP bill because he says it's reasonable. How dare you? You know it's not. I think the DWP is wrong asking for raises for employees when all the rest of city employees lost their cost of living and on furlough, losing more money. DWP already gets more than the other city employees. People in disability in SSI get no cost of living increase, federal employees that hadn't been told. I thought the cost of living has really gone sky-high, but here's DWP acting like private industry, asking for raises, especially top brass. Our electric and water rate ratios have steadily gone up to huge amounts. DWP unions spent thousands or more on backing Essel, when they're probably asking the employees wanted Essel to be councilperson. A waste of money, and city unions, I feel, shouldn't be spending money on a candidate. Only private donations. Let's see, maybe, oh yeah, maybe DWP should be a private industry, and it's getting too big. Let's break it up like the phone company. Let's have companies offer us different rates, and maybe we'll have reasonable rates, especially for people in houses. I guess Mr. Smith only sees bills in such an aid departments, or maybe he's either getting a deal, or bills are pocket change to him. He can have a green lawn. Most of us had to make deals with the DWP to keep us from being shut off. It's not reasonable. DWP should give up concessions to save city money. No favorites. First, no raise. Second, let's get their wages no more than city, other city employees in furlough. Put city council and mayor, city attorney on furlough. And better yet, let's have the city council stop throwing our money away on the CRA and give the raises and hours back to city employees. Unions shouldn't concede to the city council who wastes all their money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perman. Zumadog is our next speaker here in Council Chambers. After that, we'll go back to Van Nuys, and Deborah Stevens will follow. Good morning, Mr. Dog.
Yes, good morning. For those watching at home for the first time, on Big ZD for the 213, as you can see on City TV, if you're shady, you're spending crazy, then you'll see me, you best believe, otherwise known as the Zumadog Show. I'll be on KPFK this evening, a new weekly feature called Zumadog on KPFK, tonight at 11:00 p.m. And I've already cut the segment, and I'm here to issue an urgent alert to the people watching at home. More information at LADailyBlog.com, my blog top three in the state of California according to BlogNet News. The most important announcement I have ever made in the past three and a half years is going to be right now in five seconds. In four seconds, a major announcement. Coming in two seconds. Zumadog is here to announce that at Friday's budget hearing, they had the CAOs here to announce that the city is under extreme doomsday. It is so bad that, okay, 2,400 people will be retiring under ERIP, the most valuable and knowledgeable employees. What they said here, accounting department, so many accountants lost, the city will not be able to meet its financial responsibilities. So many auto mechanics lost that the city will not be able to maintain things like fire trucks, police vehicles, and trash vehicles. That means we're going to have trash piling up, and we're not going to be able to have fire trucks respond to emergencies or police. This is an urgent warning to the entire global community. While Mayor Viera Gosa sits around and talks about, I'm going to make L.A. the biggest green city. Mayor Viera Gosa, the top priority in 2010 is not greening, it's the fact that thousands of people are getting laid off, the fact that you will not be able to provide the basic services like fire, police, trash, and we got a hell's doomsday scenario. Get your ass out of the green and put it into the city.
But I could ask, just as a reminder to our speakers, to ask them, please, to refrain from language that might be offensive to children who watch this and others. You do have a free speech right to use that, but I'd ask you not to, please. Deborah Stevens in Van Nuys is our next speaker. John Walsh will follow here in Council Chambers.
Good morning, City Council members. My name is Deborah Stevens. I'm here today to make you aware that I will be speaking tomorrow on the medical marijuana ordinance. I am asking for you to really give thought about the statements I will be making tomorrow on behalf of a guy named Mikey, who unfortunately is saddled with health problems that would overwhelm most people. He has positively and bravely come to speak to council many times, and unfortunately, he will not be able to be here tomorrow. In addition, please be aware that the statements that Mr. Patrick Wiseman and I will make tomorrow are meant to raise your awareness about the direction to which you have been taking this ordinance. The existing dispensary model you're working on is, in my opinion, very flawed in that it, one, does not conform to the intent of California state law regarding the collective system that the voters of California passed. Two, it now creates law enforcement problems for the city. Three, the price is too high, especially for those on fixed incomes for which this law was drafted for, and everyone seems to have lost sight of that. Four, it represents, in my opinion, a taking of the agricultural properties in the city of L.A. Please understand, councilpeople, that a taking does not have to be a physical seizure of land. It can represent other things as well. It is, in my opinion, unfair and irresponsible to reward existing dispensaries who have not been, in my opinion, abiding by state law, to be grandfathered and to lock out others who want to do the right thing in this city. Do not create monopolies. A lot of existing dispensaries have given a black eye to the image of medical marijuana, and this needs to change because many good people that are ill need this substance for the ability to function in a more normal level. That depends on that. I agree with City Attorney Turtanich that cannabis should be cultivated and distributed at the same location, as was referred to in the recent L.A. Weekly article about medical marijuana. The city of L.A. has agricultural land, so please do the right thing for the people in this city when you craft the final ordinance on medical marijuana. Everyone has the right to know where the supplies of cannabis are coming from and what, if anything, is being sprayed on it. The health of society depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Next is John Walsh, and we'll go then back to Van Nuys for Sean Murphy next. Good morning.
Good morning, John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, the 53,000th most important blog in the United States, 54,000th. Flirting with lobbyists. You want to find out which member of the city council came, stood right over there and flirted with a lobbyist last Tuesday in the medical marijuana? Just show up at our website, take a guess on the post, on our comment, and then in about a few days, we will name the lobbyist who is sweeping with the enemy. Ramon Raj, number two at DWP. We are asking for an audit of every dime he has okayed for his secretarial staff. We're asking for that to be handed over, then to the city attorney and to Mr. Dimersion at Cooley's office in case there might be case for criminal prosecution of Mr. Raj. And we are also giving Mr. Raj HollywoodHighlands.org's Tiger Woods Award. We give that to the best civil servant who performs a hole-in-one. In fact, he's performed a hole-in-one, a hole-in-two, and a hole-in-three. Ramon Raj. Liquor licenses. Everybody, we had a rule here, no liquor licenses, new ones north of Hollywood Boulevard. Now you changed things, little Ricky, Mr. Garcetti, and you have given a liquor, you have given a zone change, and now a liquor license where the Hollywood, Little Country Church of Hollywood was burned down by racist swine Nazis, and now it's going to be a club as they move up Hollywood Hills. It's your neighborhood, ladies and gentlemen. And Mr. Corian, come on in here. Now, there was one particular city councilman who blessed the anti-Semitic Chris Esso Mailer, the anti-Semitism, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you very much. Just for the record, I oppose and have not given any liquor license to that property and continue to oppose that. Sean Murphy is our next speaker in Van Nuys, and Candido Mars will be next here in Council Chambers after that. Good morning, Mr. Murphy.
Good morning, City Council. Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I like to talk about public safety, when people should wear helmets. I like people to wear helmets. You had a put on item 13 a week ago. I know you're not going to open it up, so I'm going to talk about item 13. All kids, all ages should wear helmets. It's the law. Congratulations to Mr. Corian. He's going to make a good council member, and also, my choir's going to be in Bill Rosendahl's district Friday, this coming Friday for a Christmas concert at St. Jerome's Catholic Church, and we're going to sing Twice Christmas on Christmas. I hope you come out and hear the new St. Charles Choir under Jim Drolinger. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Murphy. Candido Mars is next here in Council Chambers, and then we ping-pong back to Van Nuys, and Bruce Darian will follow. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President. Council members, proud resident of the city of Los Angeles, the greatest city in the world. I miss being down here. It's absolutely, there's something very special about being down at City Hall. I want to wish all of you, again, happy holidays and that you be blessed with one thing in this coming year, and that's good health. I want to thank and congratulate Mr. Corian for his victory, and for those who worked with him, the community activists that went door-to-door, as we call it, hand-to-hand combat. And I would ask that each and every one of you in this coming year, rather than fight those that sometimes oppose you, to work with those, because the great President Abraham Lincoln once said, "Do I not crush my enemy when I make him my friends?" We're your friends. We want to work with you. We have the same goals. We want to turn this city around. We're going to have a very tough year this coming year, so we hope that you'll do that and that you'll join us in making this, again, the greatest city and the greatest country in the world. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mars. Bruce Darian in Van Nuys, our next speaker. After that is Anthony Patchett.
Yes, Council President, I had a card in for item 39 and was not called on, so I'd like to have that item reopened after public comment so I could speak on it.
Sure, well, I see it here. I don't know if it came after the fact, but we'll be happy, I'd be happy to reopen it.
Well, it was at least five speakers before it closed. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I had watched a special on Channel 39, History Channel, this last weekend. It was The People Speak, and several actors, Hollywood actors, very well-known and prominent actors in the industry, read writings of great people in history of the United States, such as Frederick Douglass, Cassius Clay, and Susan B. Anthony, and talked about their writings and the injustices that have gone on in America through the centuries here. And what a fraud. I mean, it was performed at the Malibu Performing Arts Center and in Boston. And for these people to be sitting there and reading off these writings of these great people, and to be sit there in the face of tyranny here in Los Angeles, of absolute government crime going on and cover-up. And they did a magnificent job acting-wise, but the substance, the words that were communicated by these great people through history, when all odds were against them, through trials and tribulations, where they were arrested, incarcerated, for doing the right thing, for being whistleblowers, for standing for justice and democracy. It's amazing. I'll expect that you open 39 back up so I can speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anthony Patchett. Just as a reminder for folks, Rule 11, cards need to be in before an item is taken up. But again, I'm happy to use my discretion, Mr. Darian, to reopen that today. Mr. Anthony Patchett is next. After that is Sofia Quinones. Good morning, sir.
Good morning to you and good morning to all council members. I'd like the members of the National Ford Drivers Association to stand. These are some of the people that I represent. You can hear the horns honking outside. Who am I? I'm an Irish Catholic from Southern California, taught by the Sisters of the Presentation, the Christian Brothers, Cal State L.A. Spent 31 years in the DA's office. I was an advisor to your father. I've worked for 11 district attorneys. I accidentally stumbled on this case. This is the clean truck program. And the only thing clean about the clean truck program is the amount of millions of dollars that are given to the licensed motor carriers and not given to the men that you see in this audience. $21.5 million from the Port of L.A. to 10 companies for 117 trucks. These are men and women who are going to be banned from the ports and rail yards in California come December 31st. I'm asking the city council, if on nothing else but humanitarian grounds, besides the grounds that the CARBS, if you look at their regulations, was given by a doctor who didn't have a doctorate degree. If you look at the Port of Los Angeles, the Ninth Circuit told you, this regulation is unconstitutional in Holland in part. You went in the back door through tariff order number four to enforce this. I'm asking you to mitigate your damages, because I've gone to three major law firms, and I found the biggest conspiracy case I've ever found. I was a former special prosecutor for ARB. I taught conspiracy at their seminars, and I must tell you, I've given this exhibit book to the city attorney, to William Carter, Carmen Turtanich, Kurt Leibsie. I ask you to sit down with them. I ask you to sit down with us, because if you don't, doomsday is December 31st, 2009. You think that fires, floods, all of those things cause havoc. This will cause the greatest depression California's ever seen. God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Sofia Quinones. Sofia Quinones is next, and after that is Glenn Amaya, Romania. Good morning.
Con el permiso de mis antepasados, pido la palabra. Ahora llego aquí because a few weeks ago, I was asked to attend a meeting down at the port, and I was asked to translate, and the words that I heard were these. Un hombre se colgó, y otro lo mataron. A man hung himself, and another one was killed. As I sat through this meeting, I kept hearing, I couldn't, my ears, I was just overwhelmed at all the corruption, all the discrimination, all the mistreatment that has taken place, you know, against these truck drivers. So I started hearing about a green truck program. And as a lobbyist, as someone who's worked really hard, as a volunteer with the Sierra Club, I said, I got to investigate this. I'm not here representing the Sierra Club, but I wanted to find out where these green dollars were going. I started looking at contracts. I started reading a concession agreement, and I said, this is un-American. It violates the Federal Aviation Administration Act, the Commerce Clause, the Sherman Act, the Clayton Antitrust Act, the Civil Rights Act, and many, many labor laws. The bottom line is, today's strike, you know, didn't only take place here in the ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles. We have been organizing. We have a strike going on right now, the Oakland Port and Stockton Port, and they, too, truckers came out and struck in front of their city council, asking for your help, pleading for your help. As far as I'm concerned, the green truck program is nothing more than a government-sanctioned Ponzi scheme, when you give thousands and thousands of dollars to millionaires and billionaires while the average trucker has been denied and denied application after application.
Thank you, Ms. Quinones. Glenn Amaya is next. After that is Alfonso Archundia Valacios, Valanos, excuse me.
All I got to say to all of you is, we're supposed to be a democracy, and it doesn't feel that way up there. Feels totally different, the way we're living, the way our families are living. After the 31st, we'll all be out of the job, 8,000 of us. With that, it comes everybody else, because we won't be spending a dime anywhere in Los Angeles, anywhere on Long Beach, because we won't have it. Today, alas, all of you, okay, it's supposed to be the month of joy for everybody, not for us. We feel like the biggest grain has come down and taken our Christmas away from us. It doesn't feel like democracy at all. We elected you, we put you on those seats up there to view for us, to make a good deal for us, and what you have done? Nothing. You are going to put us in misery when January 1st comes. So as a driver, I'm asking you here today to reconsider all that has been done so far. So as a driver, I'm asking you here today to reconsider all that has been done so far, the stress that we've been through, the fight that we have done. Please reconsider your votes on this and let us work. We don't ask anything else. We're asking you to let us work, do the work. Bring the foods to the supermarkets, like we usually do. Bring the clothes to Kmart, Walmart, wherever you buy it, because we're the wheels, we're the one that bring it all to you. Without us, you guys are in big trouble. And we are in the biggest trouble, because we have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alfonso Archundia Balanos. After that is Ivan Zamora.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Alfonso Archundia. And as a truck driver, we've been through a lot. This Christmas has been so sad for me and for my family, because my little daughter and my wife, she knows that after December 31st, I'm going to be another truck driver with our employee. All my family, they know that I'm not going to have a job, and as I'm a truck driver, I'm suffering, and my family is going to suffer too. So we are here for help. Like my co-friend said, we just want to work. We want to support America, and we just want to work, that all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Ivan Zamora is our next speaker. And Filberto Cervantes will be after Mr. Zamora. Mr. Zamora here? Ivan Zamora? Ivan? Ivan Zamora? Excuse me, sir. After Ivan Zamora is Filberto Cervantes. Good morning, sir.
Buenos dias. Que Dios me los bendiga y me los cuide a todos. Que Dios los proteja.
Momentito por transacción.
Ivan Antonio Zamora.
Good morning. My name is Ivan Antonio Zamora. Good morning. May God bless you, everyone.
Que Dios me los bendiga a todos, en general, que los cuida esta gran nación, que sea protegida por nuestro Señor Jesucristo.
May God bless everyone and also everyone in the nation, and may be protected by Jesus Christ.
En pocas palabras, solo quiero recordarle al Señor Vía Riegosa que él es una persona que depende de la familia latina.
In brief, I would just like to remind Mr. Antonio Villarrealgoza that he's an elected official who depended greatly on the Hispanic community.
Que él sea la persona adecuada para que trate de ayudarlo a nosotros, los troqueros.
We believe that he's the appropriate person that can help us, who has the ability to help us, the truck drivers.
Que él debe entender que estamos pasando una situación bastante dura.
He needs to understand that we're going through a very, very difficult situation.
En los puertos.
We're going through a very difficult situation at the ports.
Y que Dios lo cuide y lo bendiga, y que trate la manera de ayudarlo en este problema que tenemos nosotros, todos los drivers de los puertos.
May God take care of all of you guys and bless you all, and we hope that you find a way to help all of us, the truck drivers, because we're going through a difficult time right now with the situation at the ports.
Que Dios lo cuide y lo bendiga.
May God bless you. Thank you.
Gracias, señor. Filberto Cervantes. After that is Oscar Dominguez. Good morning.
Good morning to all. My name is Filberto Cervantes. I will not have a Happy Christmas. I live in my truck. I had a split from my son and daughter and wife in order to be able to pay rent for them on a cheaper spot from where I was at in a one-bedroom, $800, $900. So I couldn't even afford that. Comes January 1st, if we do have that crime committed against our families, I'll no longer have not even a truck to live in. So after that, my home, it's my truck at this time. The only time I get to spend with my kids is in the weekend. And like one of my partners mentioned here earlier, it's supposed to be the month of joy, and it's just not... Everybody's sick. Your Christmas is coming up, and making plans, vacations, happiness, to gather around, families, travel, and whatnot. And to me, it's the closer we get to Christmas, the more it takes my sleep away to all this crime being committed against us all, truckers and our families. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cervantes. Oscar Dominguez is next. After Mr. Dominguez is Mario Estrada.
I need to translate for English, please.
Sí. Momentito.
Mi nombre es Oscar Dominguez, presidente de la Internacional Truck Driver Association.
My name is Oscar Dominguez. I'm the president of the Truck Drivers International Association.
Quisiera decirle a todas las altas autoridades aquí presentes y de Long Beach y de San Pedro...
I would like to say the following to all the authorities in high power here in Los Angeles and Long Beach and San Pedro.
Creemos que ellos se pongan la mano en la conciencia, porque lo que viene para todos los troqueros es un tsunami del desempleo.
What I would like to ask is to put your hand in your conscience and in your heart, because what is about to happen is a tsunami for all the truck drivers.
No solo de troqueros, sino de maestros, y queremos que, por favor, que pare el desempleo.
It's a tsunami of unemployment, and it's a tsunami of unemployment not just for the truck drivers, but also for the teachers. And what we're asking is to stop this tsunami from happening, tsunami, an unemployment tsunami that's about to take place.
Lo que queremos en sí es una extensión, una extensión, por favor.
What we're asking is for an extension. We are asking for an extension of this program.
No importa de un año o de tres años, que nosotros, los hombres operarios, les pondremos unidades en la ciudad, limpias y seguras.
It doesn't matter if it's a year or three-year extension, because as truck drivers, what we're going to do is we're going to put clean units, units that are clean in the cities at your doorsteps.
Nosotros como organizaciones, nos comprometemos junto con los hombres operarios, poner esas unidades si nos dan la extensión, por favor.
As an association, what we're, in truck drivers, what we're committing ourselves to do is to work with the owner-operator, so that we could, together, united, place those clean units, together, work and put the place, place those clean units up at your doors.
Tórese la mano en el corazón, por favor.
Please put your hand in your heart and help us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just ask members of the audience to please not be disruptive to the speakers that are here by moving spaces to be in the shot and to call people or drink or other things. Mr. Dog, please, you've been warned, but please don't do that as conscious disruption of the meetings. Mario Estrada is our next speaker. After that is Ronald Martinez.
Good morning. My name is Mario. I think the term is not truck driver, it's an independent truck driver. I'm the second generation. My dad has had been for the trucking business for 25 years. He has reached the American dream. He has raised us and had put everybody, my brothers, to school. They're attending college, and they're graduating. I think that it's not fair for us, for the taxpayers' money, to give into companies, corporations, that already making money. I think the American dream, I want to reach it, but on January 1st, I won't be able, because I've already been unemployed. With the help and understanding with you guys, I just want you to make clear that we want to clear the air, going with the clean program, yes, but on January 1st, it's just not impossible. We just want to... I personally would like to have an extension, and also for the other people that have trucks, to have an opportunity to make, to have our trucks clean as well. But on January 1st, it's just too soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Ronald Martinez. And after Mr. Martinez is Pedro Montorrosa.
Yeah, my name is Ronald Martinez. I am vice president for National Port Driver Association. I ask God to eliminate all this political corruption we have right now from Swatch there, Antonio Villarrealgoza, and Turtanich too, because he said, Turtanich said, he wanted to support us, but he lied. He's no liar. He's a liar. And now, we are asking for extension, but before that, we needed a federal investigation, because those big companies like Swift, K&amp;R, they receive a billion, a billion of dollars. Ask Mrs. Han right there. I asked her why she was part of giving $10 million to Swift. Ask her right there, because I wrote on the newspaper. Because a lie from car, from Trans, from Tian Trans, he lied on car, say about the truck pollution, because the cheap, they pollute about 65%. We only have a pollution about 10% of the truck. And now, because that lie, because that political corruption, 8,500 trucks are banned from the harbor, and 6,000 are banned, are banned from the train. Why? We have a family. Why I want to give, what present I want to give to my family with this corruption? I demand a federal investigation now, and I want it. I want an extension, five-year extension after this investigation. This is corruption. This is not good for our country. This is our country. This is our city. We have to take care of our city. Don't lie. Don't laugh it, because sooner or later, you will have been there on the federal investigation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Pedro Montorrosa. Our next speaker is Pedro Montorrosa. Good morning, sir. Buenos dias, señor.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Pedro, como usted lo dijo, yo vengo aquí representando a Transporte Montorrosa, que soy honor operario también.
Good morning. My name is Pedro, and I'm here representing...
Pedro?
Transporte Montorrosa. Transporters Montorrosa. I'm also an owner-operator.
Estoy aquí para ver si le podrían dar una extensión, por lo menos para seguir en esta rama de trabajo.
I'm here to ask if you can consider giving us an extension, so we can at least continue working in this field.
Porque aproximadamente para el mes que viene, ya dicen que ya los trucks ya no van a circular.
Because we've been told that starting next month, the trucks will not be able to be in circulation.
Este es un gran problema para Los Angeles, porque va a quedar mucha gente desempleada.
This is a very big problem for the city of Los Angeles, because a lot of people will be unemployed.
Y le pedimos al señor alcalde que, por favor, lea el periódico, que aquí dice son más de lo que llevan meses sin ser empleados, que cifra reciente señala que es 646,000 desempleados.
I'm asking Mr. Villarrealgoza to please read the newspaper. There's a headline that states that a lot more unemployed people are adding themselves to the some of people who are unemployed in the recent months. The recent numbers state that 646,000 Californians are chronically unemployed.
Okay. Y si qué pasa si el otro año lo deja sin trabajo? Va a quedar el California más desempleo. No estamos en tiempo para comprar trucks. Está bien, yo estoy de acuerdo en que el clima se limpia y todo.
And what's going to happen if this happens? And next year, we're going to have a lot more people in California without employment. Yes, I am in favor to clean the environment and have clean air.
Y que, por favor, que deben que sea una extensión. Yo estoy de acuerdo. Si hay que comprar trucks nuevos, hay que comprarlo, pero no es tiempo ahorita.
I am in favor of clean air and also to have clean trucks. And what I'm asking is for an extension, so next year, we can work on the situation. Yeah, we can get more trucks to have clean trucks, but this is not the correct time to do this, so I'm asking for an extension.
Thank you, señor. Gracias, señor. Okay. Gracias. Ms. Han, we have a couple other speaker cards, but not, I think, from this group, and I know you wanted to say a couple words.
Thank you, colleagues. And I just want you to know that I have been extremely concerned about our clean truck program, that come January, approximately 6,000 independent truckers will be banned from calling on the Port of Los Angeles. And just to clear something up, I personally never gave a million dollars to the Swift Company. This was part of the state grant, and the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach gave money to companies to buy these clean trucks and hire these drivers. But what I've done for you is I have called on Mary Nichols, the president of the California Air Resources Board, to ask her to set aside $2 million specifically for you, so that if you apply now for that grant, you will be given a four-month extension. You can keep working, you can keep driving your trucks. Get your applications in now, just by the act of applying for this money, you will be given a four-month extension. I do not want you out of work. This is the worst possible time, the worst possible time, to begin laying off good truckers. You are the backbone of the goods movement industry. It is a tsunami effect, so please know that I have been fighting on your behalf. I've also asked for the Air Resources Board to look at biodiesel. Biodiesel is an alternative fuel that could be... All right, you don't want it? All right, then I won't have them look at it. Okay. I've had, I've had other truckers who've wanted me to look at that fuel, so... But just know, four months, you can keep driving your truck, get that application in. I've asked for $2 million to help you.
Excuse me, if we can have order in the chambers, ma'am? Ms. Han, respectful when you were speaking, and we'd ask the same for her when she is speaking. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Han. Our next public comment speaker is Ima or Aima. And then Walter Bechtel will follow him.
I signed up, sir. Not Ima.
I'm sorry.
Ima, stupid clown.
Okay, sorry, sir.
I wish to speak about that.
Go ahead, please, sir. The floor is yours.
I'm supposed to say, "I'm a stupid clown," and I'm going to say, "You sure are," and I want to speak about it.
Well, I'm sorry I messed up those plans, sir.
Sorry, I forgot my clown costume today. My name is ET Snell. I'm the clown community activist. Mr. Alacan's missing, Mr. Wesson's missing. I see. In fact, don't we have to have a quorum to continue this meeting? We got one, two, three, four clowns here besides five.
We do have a quorum, sir, and I'd ask you, please, to refrain from personal comments.
Pete, I'm talking about the seats that are missing, Mr. Garbage Steady. I remember your father, when he put me in the penitentiary twice on phony charges. I remember standing in front of Parker Center, and I'm sitting out there, "Hey, Mike, that leg's still shaking. How's the drug thing going?"
So if you could address your comments to the council.
You can go on DIYBB.com. Do-it-yourself bail bonds. Tells you how to get out of jail without the bail bondsman. Heard Wesson got a copy of my book. Nobody wants to talk about it. The bail bondsman are thrown out of federal court. There's a lot of issue, but what brings me here today is Mr. Turtanich. Is he available? City attorney's not here. Man, I swear to God, we need a circus tent over this building. I've been out of LA politics, I've been out in San Bernardino County. We got pedophile judges, Kamanski running around out there. Still a judge. Nobody will open up the investigation. Do we have that in LA County, pedophile judges too? I mean, it's a wide open. It's full bore what's going on in this corrupt government. I was hoping to ask that lady that Turtanich was going to throw in jail. This guy's a public pretender. Go to my site. Anybody got their pencils fired up, or is everybody just putting their head down in shame? You paying attention? I like that, Mr. Zines. DIYBB.com. Do-it-yourselfbailbond.com. Another one, tells you how to get out of jail without the bail bondsman, how they were thrown out of federal court. I have certain things that I choose to take on. And after the other site, Mr. Zines, since you're the only one listening...
He's not the only one, sir.
Is recallsCalifornia.com. I failed in the recall of Governor Schwarzenegger. I'll admit it. All I can do is get this stuff done, put it together, and I'm looking at Mr. Turtanich.
Our next speaker is Walter Bechtel is our next speaker, sir.
I'm looking at Mr. Turtanich, recallsCalifornia.
And after Mr. Bechtel will be Martha Jimenez.
I hated to come back here, but we're still having problems with the relocation at the Ford Hotel. Not just the problem with the relocation consulting firm, but not just the fact that by turning off the heating of the that by turning off the heating of the Ford Hotel, that you've created a neglectful homicide of one of the tenants of the hotel on the eighth of December. You know, it's one thing to need to move the people out, but forcing some people out by turning off the heating and causing physical problems and, uh, health problems, I, I don't, I don't see why, what's so important about the whole thing to begin with, but I have, I have, now I've discovered that the people on social security, because you're going to upgrade the property and give each room a kitchenette and a refrigerator, the social security people are gonna cut their checks by ten percent, because you're gonna have the extra added amenities. I told this to Terry Alexander and her supervisor, Carrasco, Martha Carrasco, told her that because I didn't respond, or nobody responded to this letter they sent us on the fifth of November, that it's too late. Well, what have you guys here discovered, that the person sitting next to you had committed a murder, and because he, because of the fact that he's, he's been elected to term for six years, you can't do anything until after his six years are over? That doesn't make any sense. If you find something else out, and it's important to the case, that you need, somebody needs to tell Terry Alexander over there at LHD, that that doesn't make any difference when it's found out. If it's important and it changes the case, it has to be considered.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Our next speaker is Martha Jimenez. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Martha Jimenez, I'm with the Federación Sacaticana Sur de California. I am here to implore the mayor of Los Angeles, who is known as a labor leader, and also all the city council members, to please create an MOU between the city of Los Angeles and the different independent truck drivers, to come up with a solution. It is time to save jobs here in Los Angeles. This is about time to cut jobs. Please do something, work as a rainbow coalition, like the mayor says, that he's a builder. Let's show by example that the city of Los Angeles can take this problem and create an example for the entire nation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you, everybody, for taking time out of your day to give public comment. That'll end our general public comment. Thank you again, everybody, for your time here. If we can reconsider item thirty-nine briefly? Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. And Mr. Darian, if you'd like to come forward in, if I have an eyes on item thirty-nine, just as a reminder, it says on rule eleven, that counsel, she has a speaker card, Sergeant Arms, or in your case, if I have an eyes, prior to the start of the particular comment period, but again, I'm happy to use my discretion. Mr. Darian.
Thank you. I had to go feed the meter. Item thirty-nine, where you have early screening for women for mammogram, I'm fully supportive of that, and you probably have to introduce that for men also, being as you're going to be dispensing marijuana all over Los Angeles, which is a known fact, that it increases memories in men, and also marijuana is a known carcinogen. So I would ask that you give strong consideration in, in adopting that for men as well, being as marijuana will be the thing of the future here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darian. We have one final card and public comment. Dr. James Enstrom, if you'd like to come forward, sir. Dr. Enstrom, would you like to come forward?
No.
It's all right, we'll wait for him, don't worry. Somebody could just tap him. Dr. Enstrom?
No.
If you'd like to come forward on public comment, we'll, happy to take one more card. We had closed it, but just as a reminder, and I know folks, many folks, it's the first time they come here, and those who bring new folks, just fill out the speaker card in the back, and we're more than happy to hear comments. Good morning, sir.
Hello. My name is Jim Enstrom. I'm a research professor at UCLA. I've been at UCLA for thirty-six years, and I've had a PhD in the state of California for thirty-nine years. The reason I'm coming here today is to ask for some consideration regarding an event that occurred last Wednesday in Sacramento. The California Air Resources Board realized that there'd been a flawed report that was used to justify their diesel regulations, and they issued a statement at the end of the meeting, that they want the science redone, and they want the diesel regulations reconsidered. And so, there's a number of complex issues. I'd like to speak to whoever in the city is involved with these regulations, but the primary point I'm making is that there are serious scientific flaws with these regulations. You must know that the state of California is a very healthy state. It actually ranks fourth lowest in total age-adjusted death rate, and the county of Los Angeles is even lower than the state as a whole, in terms of age-adjusted death rate. There's been a bis, a large misrepresentation of the scientific evidence, and I simply want your consideration on this. I brought several press articles. There was a front-page article on the, in the Sacramento Bee. Also, many of the newspapers around the state carried this story. I brought copies of the press articles. I also brought the announcement from the Air Resources Board. I just plead with you in the spirit of the Christmas season, to give these truckers a chance, maybe by extending the deadline two to four months, because that's the time period in which the Air Resources Board is gonna reevaluate the scientific evidence. So I thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Enstrom. That will close our general public comment. The speaker on item forty-three pulled her card, so if we can...
Mr. President, the vote is, a revote is still required on thirty-nine.
I'm sorry. Okay. On thirty-nine, if we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And if on forty-three, with the card withdrawn, if we can take up the roll on forty-three, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. And item fifty-seven, Mr. Reyes has asked for out of order. I'd like to recognize Mr. Reyes on item number fifty-seven.
Thank you, council president, colleagues.
Thank you. We are safe. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Reyes, that's not very easily picked up on the microphone. If you want to continue in a second, we'll, if we can ask folks to please clear the chambers. Thank you very much. And again, thank you, Mr. Reyes. The microphone is yours.
All right. Colleagues, I wanted to ask our department director, general manager, hold a good eye, if she can take the seat in the center. And I've asked her to give us a, well, I want to thank you for your hard work, Culture Affairs Department. We were essentially honored by Mexico and the state of Jalisco in a tremendous event called the Guadalajara International Book Fair. And I thought it was important for her to share with us, to give the summary of that event, and the accomplishments, and essentially the role we played as a city, being the first city to be recognized, given they're usually recognized countries. So without stealing your thunder, I would like to ask, if you could just provide us a quick summary and report of what occurred on that day.
Thank you so much, Mr. Reyes. We put together a PowerPoint presentation, so you'll get to see some of the images of the fair, and we're gonna start with a little brief overview of the fair. The city of Los Angeles, council member Reyes just mentioned, was honored by Guadalajara and the Guadalajara International Book Fair as the guest of honor in this year's book fair, which ran from November twenty-eighth through December sixth. Just to give you a little bit of context, the Guadalajara International Book Fair is the second-largest book fair in the world. It was founded in nineteen eighty-seven by the University of Guadalajara, and it's the largest market for Spanish-language publications in the whole world. Each year since nineteen ninety-three, the book fair has selected a guest of honor, and it's usually been either a country, or a state, or a province, to showcase its performing media and visual and literary artists to the more than six hundred thousand people who attend the fair during nine days of activities. As you can see, this is the huge expo convention center in Guadalajara, which is one of the biggest in all of Latin America, and the entire expo center is given over to the fair during the nine days of the festivities. Previous guests of honors have included Italy, Colombia, Peru, and Brazil. With Los Angeles being named guest of honor, it's the first time that a city has received this distinction, and for nine days, we took the best in Los Angeles literature, film, dance, theater, and visual arts. Participating L.A. organizations included the Getty Museum, LACMA, Otis College of Design, UCLA World Music, Southwest Chamber Orchestra, Grand Performances, Cal Arts, Red Cat Theater, Tia Chucha's Cultural Center, and the Los Angeles Film Festival, among others. The fair features three main areas of activity. There's publishing, there's academic presentations. You can see Ray Bradbury, who was appropriately beamed in from a studio location here in Los Angeles, was a huge hit with the fairgoers. There's also academic presentations and cultural presentations. That's Cheech Marin, who all of you will know as a very, not only is he a great film star, but he's also a major collector of Chicano art. The publishing component focuses on, in the exhibit area, where more than nineteen hundred publishing houses from forty countries around the world are there during the fair. The Department of Cultural Affairs took nearly five hundred artists from L.A., where they were featured in over a hundred exhibitions, performances, and film screenings, all over, not only in the expo, but all throughout Guadalajara. A total of nineteen performing arts ensembles represented us there, as well as seven visual arts exhibitions, and a sixteen-part film series that had L.A.'s as a major protagonist in each of the films. All the projects that we selected were emblematic of L.A.'s multicultural communities, and they received grants between ten thousand and two hundred thousand dollars. We received two-point-one million dollars from the National Endowment for the Arts, and that's how we were able to support this endeavor. It was a huge grant from that agency, and we were able to maximize that, because the fair itself gave us about a million dollars' worth of in-kind support, including fifteen hundred free room nights for the artists, all of the spaces, all the museums, theaters, production, marketing, et cetera. Okay, next. Keep going. So, we, these are some of the films that were shown outdoors to thousands of people in public squares around, around Guadalajara. Keep going. Keep going. You'll see that, you know, dozens of companies from Los Angeles participated, including Los Lobos, Azomotley, Poncho Sanchez, Lula Washington Dance Company. It was just a great pouring of, of activity. The, the central, what you're seeing now is the pavilion, the L.A. Pavilion, which was designed by Friedman and Kim architects. That's in the middle of the expo. That wall in the background is all of the artists and authors from Los Angeles that were there, and it was an interactive wall. The big balloons are what they called idea balloons, and seven films were commissioned from L.A. filmmakers that showed the city's art, history, architectural icons, landscape, culture, and the film industry. While the main focus of the participation was on the discussions, the panels, oh, here are some lowriders that we took, which were a huge hit. While the main focus was on the authors, we really did an outstanding job in showcasing the breadth and depth of our cultural programming. We were led by Mayor Villarreal, and council members, Ed Reyes and Jose Wezar, who were really welcomed by the citizens of Guadalajara. So it was a huge success. As you can see, this is them cutting the ribbon that opens the fair. There was over sixteen hundred media outlets that resulted in over three thousand favorable media impressions worth hundreds of thousands of dollars for Los Angeles. So the Department of Cultural Affairs was thrilled to work with the National Endowment for the Arts and the Guadalajara International Book Fair to project the place of art and culture in our community. Thank you so much for this opportunity to report.
Mr. Reyes, and then Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President. I did want to emphasize that there was an agreement signed between the mayor and the University of Guadalajara, to look at how they can engage on a campus-like facility to essentially bring forth more educational opportunities for youth. It's become very clear, when you look at the forty-eight to fifty percent dropout rate in our high schools in Los Angeles, there's gotta be another level of, of involvement, where we can share the history, the culture, and strengthen that umbilical cord that feeds our knowledge of not only our forefathers, but our role here in Los Angeles as American citizens, and the riches we have, given the diversity of this great country. So having this relationship with Mexico, with Guadalajara, will add another element of learning experiences, and hopefully encourage our young people to continue in their academics through the arts, and understanding the significance of their culture, their language, and the riches of their, of their heritage. So I want to thank Olga for her hard work.
Thank you.
It was like having a wedding for nine days in a row. You had, what, two-point-one million dollars from the federal government?
Yeah.
That came into the city in this program, and for that, we appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much for representing us well in, in Mexico on this opportunity, for this cultural exchange, but one thing that I would like you to clarify is, how were we able to fund this, and what resources did we pull together to make this possible?
That's a good question. The entire effort was funded by the National Endowment for the Arts. We did not spend any city money on this, and it would only have been available to us by getting this huge grant from the federal government. In addition, that part of the grant, probably just a little bit over two hundred thousand dollars, actually reimbursed the city for the time that my staff and myself spent on this project, and paid for all of our travel-related costs, et cetera. So along with that, the city of Guadalajara put up a fairly large portion of money, too, almost a million dollars. Fifteen hundred room nights, you know, all of the theaters, all of the museums that were made available to us at no cost. So it was really a wonderful opportunity, at no cost to the city, to really promote itself as a cultural destination.
And this event, and it takes place in Guadalajara, is this a, a small event, on the scale of what happens in these kinds of events around the world? Where does it rank?
It's the second-largest book fair in the world, so it's a very, very respected and sought-after experience to be named the guest of honor, and the fact that we were the first city selected really made it extra special, because a lot of attention was paid to us.
So what you're saying is that every year this event takes place, they have usually a government that they honor?
Correct. It's usually a, it's usually a country or a major province, like, you know, Quebec, or Andalucía, or Chile, or, you know, Brazil, et cetera.
So the fact that we were the first city to be honored, what, what kind of recognition did that give us beyond just the recognition, the formal recognition? Did people wonder why L.A. was honored? Did people ask questions about why a city, for the first time, got honored, and why Los Angeles?
Yeah. I think that there was a huge amount of excitement that, that Los Angeles got chosen, because if you realize that in this community, in Los Angeles, there's such a huge population of people of Mexican descent, of which the majority of the people who live in, in Los Angeles of, from Mexican descent, come from the state of Jalisco, where Guadalajara is. There's huge family ties, there's huge friendship ties. So people were very excited about being given the opportunity to learn more about Los Angeles beyond what you see in, on Hollywood movies or on television. It was really an opportunity for artists to meet our artists, and I think that there's gonna be relationships that are gonna take place far into the future because of this experience. We're already, as council member Reyes mentioned, talking to the University of Guadalajara, which wants to invest in opening up a... opening up a campus in Los Angeles to serve the community of immigrants here and the wider community of Los Angeles through language classes, as well as other, you know, basic skill classes. And they're going to put a lot of emphasis on culture and what culture, the role that culture plays in learning. So, I think that this is going to be an investment, which is going to be felt for many years to come.
So, Guadalajara is considering having, like, an extension of their university?
Correct.
To serve Angelinos, to serve people of California?
Correct.
It's not that, like, they're going to start, they want to start a university here and send 1,000 people from Mexico to study here?
No, it's for people here. And as a matter of fact, interestingly, the University of Guadalajara used to just have their campus in that city, but they patterned themselves after the UC system, the University of California system, and now they have campuses in several different cities in the state of Jalisco, and they're looking at this as just one more extension campus, but based here in Los Angeles and in the United States, to serve their constituents and their extended family.
So, how does the city of Los Angeles rank? Are you aware of whether or not there are more Mexicans or people of Mexican descent in Guadalajara or in Los Angeles?
My understanding is that the number-one population of Mexicans is in the federal district, then comes Los Angeles, then Guadalajara.
And who's number four?
Chicago.
Chicago. So, the reason why I mention that is because some people might wonder why we would even have this kind of cultural exchange, or why we would even accept a grant and spend a couple of hundred thousand dollars of grant money, not city money, in order to have this cultural exchange. And I think it's important for people to understand that we always talk about how Los Angeles is a multicultural city, Los Angeles is a world-class city, all these kinds of things that politicians say all the time. But the fact of the matter is, we are. We are a city that has one of the biggest populations of Mexicans outside of Mexico here in Los Angeles, one of the biggest populations of Iranians outside of Iran here in Los Angeles, one of the biggest populations of Koreans outside of Korea here in Los Angeles, and the list goes on and on and on and on and on. And I think it's important for everybody to recognize that just because Mexico is our neighbor, just because we might be overly familiar, we think, with Mexico, doesn't mean that we really know all that much. And the fact of the matter is, I hope that we can see the opportunity that a city like Guadalajara in Mexico, that they would get a grant, and that we would be able to host them, and that we would be able to have such an event here in Los Angeles, not only for the sake of cultural exchange, but also for the sake of having the opportunity to have the economic benefit that a cultural event like this brings. Again, how many people attended this event in Guadalajara?
Over 600,000 people.
Over 600,000 people. Ladies and gentlemen, we don't have enough hotel rooms to handle 300,000 people, much less 600,000 people. So, the point, the fact of the matter is, this is a great cultural exchange. It was a great economic boon for the community of Guadalajara, which they earned and deserved by having the second-largest book fair and an event like this around the world, occurring every single year. And again, I hope that we learned a lot from it, and I want to congratulate you and thank you
Thank you.
For not only accepting the grant, but doing a good job with that grant, and also I'm looking forward to connecting with my family members, who did, in fact, go to this event. And before they went, they were very excited, and they told me how big it was and how exciting it was that I found out that we were sending such a delegation from Los Angeles. And the fact that the city of Los Angeles is the first city to be honored is not only an honor, but it's something I think we have to live up to, and we have to stand for something. So, hopefully, we can actually build on what you learned and what you gained, and do more here in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes, thank you for leading the council, as well as Mr. Wezar for joining with Mayor Villarrealosa. Mr. Gueye, thank you. It's all about our city to realize we get invited somewhere to participate, and getting an NEA grant was very important, the bridge that put us together. And one of our challenges in this North America is to connect with both Mexico and Canada. And the way to connect people is through humanities, through the arts, through athletics, whether it's the Olympic Games, whether it's a book fair, or whatever. Olga, I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
I think what Mr. Cardenas said earlier, when the Guadalajara delegation comes this way, we all want to open our doors. The world is very small now when we communicate, and it is a great way to go. So, I personally wanted to thank you. This is also a great example, Mr. Reyes, when any big delegations go somewhere, that the general manager comes and makes a very nice PowerPoint. The only question that I had in there, they had a street signs of Sunset and Vine. Artistically, though, they weren't our street signs. I think they were the Beverly Hills Street signs.
They are.
Okay, so I spotted that right. I know my street signs. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you very much. We have two speaker cards on this item. Mr. John Walsh is our first speaker.
John Walsh, blogging with Mickey Jackson at HollywoodHighlands.org. Let me tell you what this was about. This was about free promotion for Antonio Villarrealosa. Remember, the city of Los Angeles is all about Antonio. What's happening now is the New York Attorney General Cuomo has hit Elliot Brody, put him in jail. The pension date is getting closer and closer to Antonio, and therefore, Antonio has asked Barack Obama, in case he gets close to indictment, to make him the ambassador to Mexico. That's what this is all about, to save him from an indictment. Read the Jewish Journal, incidentally, and you will get a lot of information about what's happening here. The mayor was down there, the mayor is hooking up. That's what's really happening. If you want to know what's really happening in this city, HollywoodHighlands.org, and Brode will bankroll him as the ambassador to Mexico. Thank you. One minute.
Mr. Zuma Dog.
Yes, of course, Guadalajara wants to honor the city of L.A., where the city closest to Guadalajara as far as the streets. Just go to Tom Labonge's Miracle Mile District, where there's illegal vending of food and durable goods right on the sidewalk. So, of course, I'm not surprised, and I'm not talking about this issue one way or the other. What I am here to say, City Council, is presentations are on Friday. This is a non-voting item, non-actionable, to sit here. Were you here on Friday? If you were here Friday, raise your hand, City Council members. They spoke about the budget and the fact that you're not going to be able to have accountants?
Please stop this time.
Excuse me?
Mr. Dog, you're off-topic.
Okay, here's my topic.
To get on topic.
The topic is regarding this item. It should never be on this agenda, and I'd like to call for the question, and I don't want to have any more discussion about the Guadalajara book fair when you have all hell breaking loose and you can't run the fire trucks or the police trucks or anything.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Dog.
Get with the program and do something!
Okay. Open the roll on that item, please.
Madam President, this is a note-and-file presentation.
All right, so we'll note-and-file without objection. Next item?
Item five is the appointment of Ms. Brenda Moore-Wilmore to the Board of Fire and Police Pension Commissioners.
Is Ms. -- was Ms. Wilmore present? Is the appointee present? Okay. Does any council member wish to make opening comments about the appointee? Mr. Smith?
President, I'm on behalf of Mr. Parks, who is obviously not with us today. Our committee did review and interview the designee. We found her very capable and knowledgeable. She has an extensive background in financial management and brings to the commission a real understanding of money and how it is invested, how it is used, and we unanimously recommend her for appointment today. Thank you very much.
Hold on. Any other members wishing to be heard on the nomination for our very patient nominee? Is there anything you'd like to add about your interest?
No, I'm just looking forward to serving on the pension board.
Great, all right. If there's nobody else, we have a vote before us and the recommendation from committee. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Congratulations, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we take up the next commission nominee?
Item six is the appointment of Mr. Jeffrey Penche to the lazers board.
Mr. -- I'd like to recognize Mr. Smith again.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Penche, for being with us. Once again, the committee reviewed the recommendation of the mayor. We found him very qualified. He has a financial background, a degree from Harvard Business School, a master's degree, and as well as from University of California, Los Angeles, so he knows L.A. He has expertise in the field. And once again, our committee found him very qualified and recommends him for reappointment. The chairman of the committee did want me to reemphasize to the mayor's office and the Ethics Department that we need a timely submittal of the information that has been requested by the council on all these designees, not just you, but all of them, as far as the ESIC issues, as far as their business connections, and particularly, as we look at the pension board, we want to see their investment portfolio issues, to make sure that they have no conflict of interest issues whatsoever. We did review that with him in depth. We found that to be reasonable and recommend his confirmation.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Would you like to add anything as well about your interest and your objectives as a commissioner?
I'm also looking forward to serving on the board. I want to thank the mayor for the appointment, and I've been a resident of the city since the '70s, and I've always believed in giving back to the community, so I'm really looking forward to public service and to serving on this board.
Well, thank you. We certainly have been nominated at a very important moment in our pension history, so we appreciate your expertise and your commitment as well. If there's no other council members who wish to be heard, we'll take a vote. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Congratulations, sir. Welcome aboard. I look forward to serving with you. Next item, please.
Item 25 is the appointment of Dr. Sue Downing to the Board of Zoo Commissioners.
All right. Item 25. I'd like to recognize Mr. Labonge from Arch Park Health and Agent.
President, member Sue Downing is a great recommendation from Mayor Antonio Villarrealosa. She is a veterinarian. She lives in West Los Angeles. She is passionate about everything, and we're very excited about her and her role there. She went to Arizona State University, and following Arizona State University, she then continued up the ladder to get a veterinary degree. Dr. Downing, we want to express your passion.
Yes, thank you. I'm very honored to be nominated by the mayor and hope that I can bring -- thank you. I hope that I can bring a new perspective to the Board of Zoo Commissioners with my medical background. I have been a proponent of zoos and enthusiastic about zoos since before my college days.
Thank you, Dr. Downing, and members, I ask for an aye vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl, and then Mr. Cardenas, and we do have speaker card on this after that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate that. Good morning. Three more minutes left.
Thank you.
I mentioned to you anecdotally, everywhere I go, and occasionally, a lady will come up to me and blast me about Billy, the elephant in the zoo. Now, my name is Billy, and the elephant is at the zoo, but it was a discussion here that went on for months. And the real issue was, no matter how much money we spend, and we're spending a lot of money of different types to make this happen, some people feel an elephant in the zoo will be detrimental to the elephant's health, that its feet will develop problems and other issues will develop. Most recently, I was elephants looking at them at another zoo, and I might say that what we're creating at our zoo is one of the state-of-the-art for elephants. I'd like your sensing about the elephant in the zoo, and what comfort will you give me that Billy will be in good shape in that area there?
I admit that I'm unfamiliar with the details of the new housing project. I do believe that we have an obligation, if we are going to keep these animals in captivity, that it's important to recognize the special physical and psychological needs that they have, and that we have a responsibility to house them with state-of-the-art facilities and appropriate care.
Can I count on you keeping an eye on Billy so that I don't get folks coming at me and saying that his feet are falling apart and this and that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Another thing, just in overall sense about the zoo, I'm big into animals. I happen to be a freak. I really love animals because they balance me out. But one of the things that concerns me is enough water, enough greens, enough vegetation. My most recent tour of the zoo, I was a little concerned about that kind of quality support for our animals. Will you look into that, too?
Yes, I will.
Okay. And why do you want to be on the zoo commission?
Zoo -- zoos have been near and dear to my heart since an early age. I'm looking forward to an opportunity where I can provide guidance and steerage for such a prestigious institution. I hope that I can serve well.
That sounds great. Last thing I want you to do is look at the parking lot at the zoo. I want to charge for parking in this down economy. I'd like another revenue stream, and I'd like your sensing, could we charge $5 to park at the zoo? That's an extra $5. That could be worth thousands of dollars of income for the city. Will you look into that?
Yes, I will.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Cardenas is next.
Yes, I just wanted to take this opportunity to remind the public and to ask you the question. Are you aware of the capacity of this particular commission as actually advisory, and that this commission does not set policy for the zoo?
Yes, I am aware.
Oh, okay. Because even myself, as a council member, a couple of years ago, I thought that the -- this particular body of appointed officials actually had more than advisory capacity, but I just wanted to reiterate that again. Unfortunately, it is only advisory only, but I do appreciate your willingness and effort to focus on the zoo. It certainly is an important aspect and an important responsibility for the city as a whole, and I just want to let you know that you're welcome to work with me in any capacity whatsoever, should you have anything that you'd like to advance or get done. Obviously, you can work with the zoo directly. You're advisory to them, but at the same time, I have a particular interest in what goes on there beyond elephants, just in general, just like Tom Labonge does. We all want that zoo to be as well-run as possible, and it is well-run. We want that zoo to be as effective and efficient for the public access and also for the animals that are there and kept there. But I just want to let you know that I want to personally welcome you to work with me if you have anything you need my help with. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one public speaker card. Zuma Dog on the zoo. Commissioner. All right. The dog passes on the zoo. We will then go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Welcome aboard, and congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next item, please.
Item eight called "Special" for Councilmember Rosendahl, and an amending motion has been circulated.
All right. Mr. Rosendahl, did you want to be heard on number eight, or was it just for the amendment?
Yes. We have a lot of speaker cards on it as well, and what I'd like to do, Mr. President, is ask staff to come up with a quick overview of what we're doing, and then to let the public comments happen. We're going to do some fine-tuning of an existing ordinance, and then we're going to bring it back after the first of the year for final discussion on it. And Mr. Labonge was even suggesting, as head of Rec and Park Committee, that he might even want to hold a hearing on it in the 11th district to discuss it further. But it's a work in progress, and we seem to find ourselves always challenged on the oceanfront walk. And colleagues, you know that the Venice Beach is one of those spots on the planet that people come from all over to walk it at least once. When we opened up our skateboard park the other day, it is the most-used skateboard park, I'm told now, not only in the city but in the country. So, Venice Beach attracts a lot of interest. It's a tough thing to maintain the issues that are for the democracy and at the same time, support the local community. So, first, I'd like city staff to quickly take us through where we are. Then, if it's indulgence, I'd like to let the community speak before we talk further. Please. Mr. Brown, introduce yourself.
Thank you. Good morning, council members. Mark Brown, Senior Assistant City Attorney. What you have before you this morning is a substitute motion requesting the city attorney to make four modifications to the Los Angeles Municipal Code, Section 42.15, which governs beach vending and specifically, as applied to the Venice Boardwalk. The four matters that -- well, there's a working group that has been meeting periodically under the direction and instruction of the council office, including the council office, the city attorney's office, the Los Angeles Police Department, and Rec and Parks Department, to evaluate how, under the new ordinance that was court-assisted and resulted from a settlement of a lawsuit in 2008, to bring this revised in 2008, to bring this revised version of Section 4215 into the code. There's a working group that's been meeting periodically to evaluate how that's been going since 2008, when the new ordinance was put into effect. And what the working group has come up with and what the motion that the council member addresses is four changes that would make enforcement of the ordinance easier to accomplish. And so, I'm going to briefly describe what those four are, and then I'm going to introduce Robert Haskin from Recreation and Parks. He's the park director at Venice, or park staff at Venice, who is there every day on the ground and can testify as to some of the reasons for these four changes. And also Captain Hiltner and Sergeant Reyna here from the Los Angeles Police Department, who can talk about some of their enforcement issues that have given rise to the request to draft these four changes. So the four changes, very quickly...
The one they asked is a little different than what we...
I believe the substitute motion, I've been asked to mention, I believe the substitute motion is actually being prepared as we're having this discussion. I think the initial substitute motion that was circulated didn't have these points exactly the way that I'm going to describe them now, but the motion, I'm told, is being revised. The motion requests us to draft four changes. The first one being ensure the use of musical instruments and amplified sound outdoors, including on private properties immediately adjacent to the boardwalk, is discontinued at sunset until 9:00 a.m. the following day. And that would basically conform noise provisions dealing with musical instrumentation and amplified sound. It would conform those to the other activities that are permitted on the boardwalk. Those activities cease at sunset every day until 9:00 a.m. the following day. The second is ensures that all large-act performers, defined as those who use the five double-sized spaces on the boardwalk because they attract an audience of more than 25 persons, that they rotate spaces in a timely manner, thus allowing for the participation of other large-act performers to use the double-sized spaces. And the third one would be to require the Recreation and Parks Department to conduct lottery system year-round for designated spaces on the boardwalk in the P zones as well as the I zones, which currently have a year-round lottery system, since demand exceeds supply of designated spaces in both zones throughout the entire year. The fourth point would be to ensure the existence of emergency and non-emergency ingress and egress between the beach and boardwalk by prohibiting obstructing or impeding the access areas between the designated spaces in the P zones and I zones on the boardwalk. And with that, I'll turn it over to Robert Haskin to explain from a Recreation and Parks staff viewpoint why these changes should be made.
Good morning, council. The first item, the changing of the...
Introduce yourself for the record.
My name is Robert Haskin. I'm the management analyst down at Venice Beach Recreation Center. I'm in charge of the Public Expression Permit Program. The change of the P-zone lottery to year-round, prior to this year, this past year, we've always done a year-round lottery. But in the current ordinance, it only asks for a lottery for the peak season. But I've brought statistics to show that the demand for the spaces this year greatly increased, more than they were in previous years when that change was made. And I want to submit this into record so we could show why we need to put the year-round lottery back in effect. The second reason, B, I will turn over to the sergeant.
Good afternoon. My name is Captain Joe Hiltner, the commanding officer of Pacific Area. And as two previous speakers have mentioned, we want to modify the ordinance to make this a more functional ordinance and assist us in policing the beach. And with me, I have Sergeant Mark Reyna, who is the officer in charge of the Venice Beach Detail. And I'd like, at this point, for him to go into some of the specifics that we have to support this request to change to the ordinance.
Good afternoon. Sergeant Mark Reyna, officer in charge of Venice Beach Detail. The first point that was brought up by Mark Brown regarding the year-round lottery, we have some crime reports and arrest reports from March and April of this year, just prior to the lottery going into effect, where there was assaults that occurred on Oceanfront Walk, where vendors would fight over designated spots because there is no lottery ticket for them. It would be a first-come, first-served basis at 9:00. So prior to 9:00 a.m., and also after 9:00 a.m., there'd be vendors that would assault each other trying to get a designated spot on the boardwalk so they could vend. So we have some reports here for that. Also regarding the second point Mark Brown brought up with the noise issue on Oceanfront Walk, we did an audit with our Communications Division for approximately the last 20 months. And in the Oceanfront Walk area, from the border at Santa Monica, approximately down towards Venice Boulevard, on Oceanfront Walk and just on the streets adjoining Oceanfront Walk, the Los Angeles Police Department logged approximately 540 calls for service regarding noise in 20 months. Half of those calls, approximately half of those calls, occurred between 9:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m. The calls for service vary a lot, have to do with musical instruments, vendors playing after 9:00 a.m., or correction, after 9:00 p.m. or after sunset. Also, people group together and form drum circles, and the restaurants that have live music outside, amplified sound, vendors that come back late in the evenings and play their musical instruments that are disturbing the residents and affecting their quality of life for the residents and the individuals that live down in Oceanfront Walk and in the area. Also regarding the third point that Mr. Brown brought up with the designated spaces having access between designated vending spaces, what we're seeing on Oceanfront Walk is we'll have vendors that set up between the designated spaces. And that limits the access for both the public and law enforcement to go from Oceanfront Walk to the sand or the grass area behind, on the west side of Oceanfront Walk, or vice-versa coming back to Oceanfront Walk. At some points, law enforcement, who have to access the beach or are coming from the beach to access Oceanfront Walk, have to go around the vendors, and sometimes this adds time to the emergency response. And also, it limits the access for the public going back and forth from the beach to Oceanfront Walk.
All right. I want to thank you all for your presentation. Robert Haskin, I want to thank you on the beach there, understaffed most of the time, having to do what you do. And it isn't an easy task, considering a million people come through the beach every year. I really am grateful for your presence there. And thank you for that. I also want to make sure people understand that Sergeant Mark Reyna walks on water, as far as I'm concerned. I've seen you in more difficult situations, using diplomacy in a situation that is very difficult. And your leadership has been extraordinary for me on the beach. I've walked with you. I've seen you. I've interacted with the vendors and with the performers and the musicians. And hats off to you and what you've done.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to let the public comment come up at this point.
Councilmember, could I just say, before you do that, could I just ask...
Oh, please.
...to allow Robert Haskin to make one more comment about the rotating of performer spaces? I don't think he got to make a comment.
Sure. Terrific. Go for it.
Thank you very much. Yes, the second change that we feel was needed was the rotation of the large performer acts. Right now, as it's written, it's kind of unclear whether they... It's more or less optional whether they want to rotate or not with other performers. The change that's needed is to clarify that, that they must rotate if they're more than one performer that wants that space.
Yeah. And I also want to comment about the commercialization. That is very frustrating for me. On the west side of the beach, we see junk that says "two for $5", and it's undermining the legitimate businesses on the other side of the street. Is there any reason why we just don't throw them out? When I walk the beach all the time, and I see "two for $5", I see all this plastic garbage that comes from somewhere. Why haven't we been able to enforce the law that says no commercialization unless it's obviously within the rules that we've set up on the beach?
Yes, councilmember. I think if it says "two for $5", as soon as there's a price set, we are able to enforce. I think the complication arises when things are displayed for donation only. And so, we know that in many cases, they're not really there for donation only, that there would intend to be a sale of items.
Yeah, I understand that. But what I would like to see is as a work in progress is I'd like to see a partnership with a group that could actually monitor it for us. I mean, I'm not an expert, but I could walk the beach and point out how many that I see just with the eye that frankly don't fit within the rules and policy. So that's for further discussion. I don't want to go through it right now. But, Mr. President, if we could have public comment, okay?
And just one more thing. With regard to the documents that Sergeant Reyna was referring to...
Yeah.
There needs to be some information, personal information redacted from those documents, but he would also like, after we do that, to submit those for the record. And that was the audit of the communications.
Excellent. Good. I'll look for that. And just for my colleagues' appreciation, the lottery is one issue. Do we go 12 months out of the year? Some feel yes, some say no. The rotation is obvious. We need to rotate in and out. The amplification, after sunset until 9:00 in the morning, no amplification. You have enough statistics that make that very clear. And some people actually feel there shouldn't be any amplification period on the beach, but that is a work in progress and a further discussion. But I appreciate your statistics about from 9:00 a.m. to from sunset to 9:00 a.m., and the concerns that that have had. And that's a no-brainer for me to shut down the amplification at that point. If we could have public comment, Mr. President.
Thank you. Steve Human, we'll have a minute per speaker. Steve Human is our first speaker, and then Stephen Fisk will follow.
Where my minute starts, you know, I came a few weeks back when this was on, and we were going to have two minutes, and at the last second, Councilman Rosendahl asked if it could be one minute. And now you're asking, I've waited here all day, and now you're going to say one minute again? I mean, I feel like saying, when my cold fingers are pried from this podium...
Sir?
You know, I should get...
If there's a motion to change that from the council floor, that doesn't come from the podium, with all due respect, we understand, sir. But there's nine cards, Mr. Rosendahl. We've had, I know, a public hearing on this, so is there any objection to two minutes per speaker on the council floor? Excuse me, sir. Don't worry. We will stretch your time. We will be very fair. Please give us that respect right now as well. All right. There's no objection. We'll do two minutes. Mr. Human will be our first speaker, and Stephen Fisk will have about 20 minutes, then a public hearing on this.
My name is Steve Human. I'm with Sidewalk Enterprises. We own businesses on the boardwalk. I'm looking at the motion that was crafted, and I hope you guys remember the "Where's the Beef?" commercials, because I'm really wondering, where is the beef? Part A, discontinuing noise at sunset. Great, I agree, but this does not go far enough. We should not have amplification on the boardwalk. It's... Everybody agrees. There should not be amplification on the boardwalk. Short of that, it shouldn't be allowed within a certain distance of the boardwalk. Short of that, we should open up the amplification to the whole boardwalk, not just some places, so that all the musicians are packed into one spot. Second part of the motion, making sure performers are rotated. I agree, but the devil's in the details. If the performers aren't required to rotate to a new location, a different spot, then we're just codifying what's already going on. There should also be silence rotated in. There should be some periods of silence in these spaces. And also, many of the performers are not in the large-act spaces. They're in the little spaces, and they can sit there all day long. And frankly, they don't care. They are not, some of them, reasonable people. They will harass you because it's fun for them. The lottery, we can debate the merits of the lottery, but I must say, it really removes focus from the larger issue of commercial vending being worse than it has ever been on the boardwalk, of noise levels being worse than they have ever been on the boardwalk. We need someone in the city to please have this as their responsibility, their job, to work on this. Otherwise, we are all like wet shirts 100 years ago. We're hanging out to dry. We're blowing in the wind. Someone needs to help.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Stephen Fisk. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker after that will be Therese Dietlin, or Deitlin, excuse me.
Good morning, councilmembers, staff members, and guests. And season's greetings to you all. I'm a 35-year resident of Venice and a community organizer, a professional musician, and I've been involved heavily in the boardwalk issue for the last five years. During that time, the ordinance has been rewritten, modified, and amended. And during that time, where the ordinance calls for restoration, preservation, and protection, and a revitalization of the historically significant public forum of Venice Beach and the free speech zone, there has been no, and I mention, underline, no restoration, preservation, protection, or revitalization of the boardwalk. These ordinance have been ineffective and have been a failure. We want our boardwalk back. The boardwalk is designed to be an expressive forum for the public in art, in music, in public expression, and in free speech. The ordinances have been restrictive, and this most recent ordinance is complicated, confusing, and unenforceable. And the lead officer of the Venice Division has publicly stated so, that this ordinance is difficult to enforce. How can we have an ordinance that the police cannot even enforce? This is a travesty, and this is ridiculous. There's a proposal on the councilman's office, on his desk, to call for an independent third party to basically manage the boardwalk, because the issue is one not only of an ordinance that is ill-suited for the unique cultural context of the boardwalk, but one of management. Where does it say that the Department of Recreation and Parks is the agent for subsidizing commercial vending on the boardwalk? Commercial vending is the big problem.
Thank you, sir. Therese Deitlin, or Dietlin, excuse me, if I mispronounce that, is next, and after that is Marie Fink.
My name is Buddy. It's Therese Dietlin. You got it right. I actually was going to do a song and dance for you, because we're going through the same thing over and over and over again. But I just want to tell you that your ordinance, in spite of Mark Brown's glowing reports of all the efforts he's making, has essentially created a criminal enterprise on the boardwalk. We have wholesale, retail, cheap junk from China merchandise on the boardwalk. The free speechers, the performers, and the artists who were meant to be there and who are the draw to all those people who come to Venice to see what's going on, have been essentially driven out on the boardwalk. And I want to point out that free speech is a right. It's not a lottery prize on the boardwalk or anywhere else. And I'd like to say, I had a couple other comments I wanted to say. I come, I say the same thing every time. We're being choked to death there. Now Mark Brown wants to make sure everybody has to be in the lottery to be out there. Listen, Ninth Circuit said, "We have the right to do, exercise our First Amendment free speech right." You have the duty to protect that right for us out there. And instead, you're trying to lotterize it. Let me remind you again, free speech is a right. It's not a lottery prize. Now, people have been wishing you well and blah, 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 and blah, 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 for the holidays and all that. These truckers said you committed a crime with what you did with them, the boardwalk. What you've done there is another crime. And they said they wished you good health in the new year. Well, here's what I'd like in 2010. I'd like a constitutional government.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marie Fink. After that is Michael Folker.
We should have a reality show here. I'm telling you, the last two hours and 18 minutes I sat here, I feel like I'm in a reality show. Mr. President, everyone here, first of all, the Christmas tree and the Hanukkah thing outside was overwhelmingly beautiful. This is a very hard job. This is the bottom line. I was always for the lottery for the last five years. I am now against the lottery. You could sit up there, you have to hear all these things. You have to be with us to understand what's going on. People buy and sell spots. I did not get called for nine weeks in the summer. Nine weeks I did not get called at all. So people are buying and selling spots in the winter. If you have the lottery system, it is not going to work. In the summer, I can understand it, but in the wintertime, it gets cold at 3:30 or 4:00, and if we can't set up until 12, that gives us two hours to perform. This is not... gives us two hours to perform. This is not fair. Please consider not having the lottery in the winter. Also, if you, how can you run a city? I've been asking all of you to remove an illegal bench, which you promised to remove two years ago, and that bench is still there. They said they can't remove it because there's a nail in the way. If you can't remove an illegal bench, how are you going to run a city? I want to thank you very much. God bless you. Oh, I've got 44 minutes. And I want to thank you very much. Please table this until another time, because they were talking about crime statistics. One incident in front of me, that someone was stabbed. This guy had violent and was paroled for violence, and he just wound up on the boardwalk. He would have stabbed someone whether he had the lottery system or not. Please consider not having a lottery system now. It's been very quiet there. Think on the P zones, from October 19th to May, something. We would appreciate it if you would allow us to be ourselves. Thank you very much. God bless all of you. And this is a very hard job, Mr. President and all of you. I know some of you, and I wish you well and your families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Same to you as well, Ms. Fink. Michael Folkert is our next speaker. After that is Barbara Duffy. Good afternoon, sir.
Hello. Michael Folkert, Venice Beach Merchants Association, vendor on the east side of the boardwalk with two retail stores. The escalation of the problem of illegal vending has got much worse since this ordinance was written. It's totally unenforceable. And with what we're trying to do here today, it's like putting a Band-Aid over a wound that needs open-heart surgery. Seriously. I estimate that the merchants on the east side of the boardwalk, within the last 10 years of this controversy that's been going on, have lost about $72 million in revenue. Talk about lawsuits. That'd be a big one for you to have to face up to. Until the ordinance changes have been made, I think we should ban the display of goods in the P zone, except what it says is allowed to be sold there, which is bumper stickers, political pins, books, photographs, things of that nature. Also, we should, we should stop any amplified sound that is interfering with the peace of the business and residents of the area. They already spent thousands of dollars on these little testers to see if your noise was too loud, and nothing ever happened with that. The music's still one of the biggest problems on the boardwalk. I just hope something can be done. We're about out of patience with it. We're ready to go back to our attorneys and see what we can do as far as compensation for the damages that have been caused us. We don't want to do that. We just want to do business and earn our money the hard way like it's supposed to be done. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir. Barbara Duffy is our next speaker.
I'm a merchant on the boardwalk on the east side for 30 years. We've seen the 4215 ordinance a failure, time and time again. There is no enforcement. It's too complicated. It was written for lawyers, not for police officers, not for the park and rec people. They all say they can't enforce it. And what we get is illegal commercial vending profiting from this. We sit there and watch these businesses set up time and time again directly across from us. There's nothing we can do. We call the police, and they say, well, there's nothing we can do. It's a First Amendment problem. And they're blatantly selling commercial goods from downtown L.A. I see merchants selling exactly what I'm selling directly across from me. They have no overhead. I don't mind competing with my fellow merchants, but when you have someone directly across from you has no overhead, pays no taxes, they don't even have a place, they can use a public trash can to throw their excess garbage. I'll get a $50 ticket if I do that. It's an insult. And it's become an issue to the point where we would like to explore a special district for Venice Beach Boardwalk, where we can control, have somewhat of a say, like the other areas do. Because of the skateboard park that's just been introduced, that's kind of bumped us up as, if we weren't special already. And we're ready to do this. We're ready to consider investing money in it, whatever it takes, because the ordinances are not effective. It's a tragedy. I can't tell you how sad it is to watch my fellow merchants go out of business. And I'm soon to do that. If something isn't done, to be totally ignored, year after year, it's absolutely heartbreaking. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you for your patience as well. There's jingles here. After that is Warren Green.
Mark Brown, you've messed things up for the 10th time. Enough is enough is enough. We must ask the City Council bill to look closely at Stephen Fisk and consider adopting the peacekeepers proposal. That is their only saving grace. First of all, Robert left the City Council chambers, Robert Haskins. What he said is not the truth. He did say that there's more demands for lottery spaces, but that demand is coming from the commercial vendors. Out of 300 people to join the lottery, about 200 of them are commercial vendors. If those commercial vendors were taken off the boardwalk, there would be enough room for everybody, and you wouldn't need a lottery. We need to phase out the lottery and adopt Stephen Fisk's proposal. Enough is enough, Mark. I encourage you to read Stephen Fisk's proposal.
If you could address the council as a whole, please.
Pardon me?
If you could address the council as a whole. This is a chance for her to take testimony. Thank you.
And anyway, what else I want to say, except that being a free speech activist, I've been on the boardwalk for about 35 years, and then lottery makes it nearly impossible for me to get a space. And if it goes all year round, that'll be the end of myself and all the activists on the boardwalk. We are not joining the lottery. We're not going to be part of the lottery. The lottery is full, the lottery is full of collusion, of cheating, and lying, stealing, and trading, and swabbing. It's not working. And it has nothing to do with people fighting over spaces. Get rid of the commercial vending, and then you won't even need the lottery. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Warren Green is our next speaker. After that will be Musa Musli.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Warren Green. I make my living on the Venice Beach boardwalk. I just want to express my opinion concerning the, specifically, the lottery. I find that the lottery encourages, as it stands now, people, the commercial, to use the spaces for commercial reasons, to go downtown and to resell on the boardwalk. The spirit of free expression, to me, is not a lottery. I agree that if you want to participate, you, first come, first serve works. I have not seen a problem. I've been there for several years. And I'd like to ask the council to table any changes at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our last speaker is Musa Musli.
Hi, everybody. I run my own business called Mozy Jewelry on the boardwalk for almost 15 years, and I've never seen the boardwalk as bad as it is right now because of all this illegal commercial vendings. And the lottery system is not enforced at all. And most of these people, they come in, they put their merchandise, they sell it, they don't pay taxes, they don't pay rent, they don't pay nothing. And we're suffering for that, and we're seeing our businesses going downhill because of it. I hope from everybody, take care of this for us. And I just want to say something. I live around the corner here on Spring and Second. I see most of these people, the illegal commercial vendings, are buying, they're buying their merchandise, wholesalers, and they come in and they sell it on the boardwalk. And few times happened this month, which is, they come in my shop, and they ask me if they want to buy wholesale jewelry from them. I don't think this is fair. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. And Zuma Dog, if you'd like to be our last speaker. Again, we'll use the discretion on Rule 11.
Okay, now, for those watching at home, I've been coming here over three and a half years over this exact issue that we're still here on. I'd like to say, first of all, I say no action today. You need to put it on hold, because Dowd and myself have a federal lawsuit, and a federal judge is going to rule on this. How could you change the law now, when you've got a federal judge who's going to make a ruling? Now, regarding the noise issue, with all due respect, Councilmember Rosendahl, he's suggesting a sunset. Matt Dowd got a ticket for 4:45 in the afternoon. So if you're allowed to have amplification, I certainly think 4:45 in the afternoon is not too late. If you started at 9:00 in the morning, why don't you stay like 9:00 to 8:00 p.m., something like that, just to cover it. Regarding the lottery, you have sold unlimited numbers of permits. You've sold unlimited numbers of permits while you have reduced the number of spaces. The federal judge wanted more. You made it less, and then you sold unlimited amounts of permits. That's why there's a problem. You can't put the First Amendment in a lottery system. Okay, now regarding the merchants, yes, it could be very frustrating competing with the commercial vending. I, as a performer, don't like it either, because what happens is, you have the lottery, and then the commercial vendors go in there, and then we can't get performer spaces. But to the merchants, you know, it's a bad economy, and the vendors have a bad time, too, on our side of the street. But if you can't compete with the guy who sets up a table in the rain, and if you can't compete with that, then you've got a marketing problem, store people. There's a lot of successful people in the stores, because you can do what the vendors can't. We've got to set up a table. We have to sit in the rain. We have to be there at a certain time. It's a down economy. I'll tell you what, to the people that complain that the vendors with the table and some crap that they get, if you can't compete with that, you don't deserve to be there. And for people that complain about noise at Venice, Venice has been there with noise since the '70s. You moved into the area knowing what you were getting. You moved into Venice for all of this. Now you want to drive it away. You're nuttier than we are, the people that are complaining. Thank you.
And just as a reminder, sir, speaking of noise, if you could please, our equipment gets feedback consistently. If you could lower your voice and express your ideas at a reasonable volume, it'll help us hear you better, no doubt, as well. That is our last public speaker. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah, thank you.
That was our last public speaker.
Thank you. And I want to thank you, colleagues, for letting us indulge in this two-minute for each of the groups. What I'd like to do is instruct city staff to come back with an ordinance that does the following. It deals with the amplification sound that we've talked about. It talks about the large performing acts and how they would rotate. And as for the lottery, it does not say year-round. It says, let's further discuss it with the option of either not doing it or doing it, but no resolution of that issue will happen in the council chambers today. And then, obviously, there'll also be, to ensure the existing emergency and non-emergency ingress and egress between the beach and the oceanfront walk happens. And colleagues, they'll come back with this as an action item. I totally agree about the commercialization on the west side has to stop. And I am entertaining the notion of a peacekeeper group or some kind of a group that partnerships with us since Wreckon Park doesn't have the resources to go forward with it. Seems like a no-brainer to me to be able to pick these things out and throw them off, and allow more space for the jingles of the world, who've been around for 40 years on the beach and can't even find a space, or the lady there that does palm reading and all, can't even get there when they've been part of the free speech over the years. And when you look what's taken the space, it's basically cut-rate stuff that competes with our merchants on the east side. So, in conclusion, I'd like us to come back with an ordinance that makes those modifications we have at the desk, but is Item 8C, that should allow the flexibility for us to further discuss the lottery. But also, we need to find a mechanism to get rid of that commercialization on the west side. And Mr. Laban, I look forward to us continuing this discussion under your leadership with mine in Venice at another date. So that's my motion.
Thank you. Mr. Laban?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. And as you suggested, and Mr. Wesson, Mr. Reyes, our committee in 2010 will take a trip to Venice. We'll coordinate our hours so that we can all try to be available to hear these items. And I'd just like to ask staff, because I know there's about, I don't know, 1,293 miles of California coastline. Are there any ordinances, and I know Venice is extremely unique, but are there any ordinances or any municipalities that would help us in any which way? What does Santa Monica do? What does Redondo Beach do? I know everybody loves to go to Venice, and I know you're proud of that, Mr. Rosendahl, but at the same time, trying to balance it out, is there any concepts and ideas that are there that we could look at to try to put a touch on it that would make as many people happy in a way that is sometimes difficult to do? So if we could look at that as well. Because I wanted to know, up in San Francisco, if you've ever been to San Francisco, Mr. Rosendahl?
I have.
Yeah, all right. You know, down in San Francisco, they've got a lot of tourists who walk right there near the park, right by the bay. Alcatraz is right out there. Giandelli, Giandelli Square, you know, the square right there, and right down the street, there's a tremendous amount of people who are artisans who are there. But it seems to be done in a way that works with commerce, as with creative commerce. So I look forward to the time. Maybe we could discuss something. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Laban. So just to clarify, Mr. Rosendahl, you referred to an 8C. I think there's just 8B and 8A. Did you want to...
Bottom line is, we want to protect First Amendment speakers. We want to protect artists and their ability to do their art. And we also want to get rid of the commercial vendors on that side. And we obviously want to deal with the amplification that has been a disturbance to everybody. So...
So do you want to hold the, we don't have a C. We just have A and B, were the two amendments?
Yeah. Evoc's been running around to do that. So just hold it at the desk. We'll vote on it later on that point.
Okay.
Okay. But I want to thank everybody for coming in this discussion.
Okay, so we'll hold that on the desk for now, and we'll move to the next item then.
Item 33, called Special for Cards.
Okay, item 33 is next before us. Mr. Walsh, if you'd like to come forward on item number 33. That is the foreclosure eviction ordinance, extension of one year.
100%. I hope the public out there, the 70,000 people out there, understand what this is. It expands, extends the period where you're protected if you're, the owner of your building goes into foreclosure. They can't, and you're under rent control, they can't bounce your backside out of the, out of your apartment. You just have to live with L.A., but it's, rent control, people ask me whether I'm left or right. Well, without rent control, I'd be in the street. So thank you for rent control, because my apartment would go for about $2,500. I pay $700 for it. HollywoodHighlands.org. Occasionally, you get things right. Not nearly often enough.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. And also, just so, as a point of information, this applies to non-rent control as well, have the protections. So everybody would be covered. We're going to, I think, continue this for one day till we have 12 members. I was informed that without 12 members on the first reading, it would go over to a second reading in the new year, and the protections wouldn't be extended. So we'll continue that without objection till tomorrow when we have 12 members. And we'll close the public hearing on that. Next item, please.
Yes, if I could ask, that we reconsider seven and a half, some questions on that item?
Okay.
And we've asked CIO to come down to respond to some of those questions.
And just for the entire council, I think we have until 1:30. We have a couple committees that are starting that were canceled last week. So we're going to try to hit that deadline to end the meeting. We have about, I think, eight items left. So just in consideration, if we can keep all of our comments brief, let's go ahead and please open the roll on seven. And, oh, Mr. Rizar, you may not want to reconsider seven in that it's an ordinance. There are no longer 12 members, so it would not pass today on the first reading.
We wouldn't be able to pass it today.
Maybe you could ask those questions on the side of staff, and then if you still have a question, we can consider...
Sounds good. I'll ask those questions now, but there might be a reason to hold it and...
Just let me know we can reconsider before the end of the meeting. Okay. Next item, please.
Item 35, called Special for Cards.
Okay. John Walsh is on item 35. He'll be followed by Jeff Lee.
John Walsh and Mickey Jackson blogging at HollywoodHighlandsLands.org. This is the, you remember a couple of years ago, they were saying that people who wrote at home had a workspace there, and they were going to be taxed. They're still trying to do this. If you do anything at home, they say, well, that's, that's a work, and therefore you don't live there. You have to pay all sorts of incredible taxes. This is a better version of it. Meanwhile, thousands of prostitutes work out of their home pulling tricks. They never pay any taxes. But anybody, you know, who lives at home and takes a phone call, that's a workspace.
After that is Veronica Perez.
Good morning, Council President and council members. My name is Jeff Lee, and I'm president of Lee Homes. And what this item is about is changing the percentage of commercial that is allowed in a live-work unit from 66.23% to 25%. The reason the change is needed is that after the mortgage meltdown of 2007, 2008, 2009, the only way for many of our buyers to receive financing is through FHA loans. Those loans have a 3.5% down payment. Credit scores have gone up, so our buyers are qualified. We have built over 700 live-work units in the city over the last eight years in many council districts. Our project in Ms. Hahn's district's Center Street Loss has had great difficulty in attracting buyers because now, for a $300,000 home, they have to put $60,000 down. And these buyers, starting out their careers in young families, do not have this kind of money. We are about to open, hopefully, in the end of January, a project called Altaloffs. It's the old Fuller Paint Building in Councilman Reyes's office. If we, if our buyers have to have 20% down, I can tell you that this project will turn into a rental project. The change in the ordinance will have no effect on the way people live and/or work in these projects. They won't limit the amount of employees they're allowed to have, nor that they will be allowed to work in these units. This is a very important ordinance for affordable live-work housing and to keep homeownership housing continuing in this very tough market, and I hope you will approve it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lee. Veronica Perez is our next speaker. After that is Zuma Dog.
Good afternoon, council members, and Veronica Perez with the Central City Association. I'd first like to thank our very talented planning staff, who's worked very hard on this issue, and they've been very open to listening to community and stakeholder input, and we appreciate that very much. We're very pleased to be here today to support the item before you. For over a year, CCA has been working with stakeholders on this issue, and we believe that the amendment before you will be the most effective solution. FHA loans could provide a critical lifeline to the ailing downtown housing market and housing market throughout the city, and a great opportunity for home buyers. Unfortunately, up to this point, FHA has been denying these loans to live-work units throughout the city, citing their own internal guidelines, which do not permit loans for units with over a certain percentage of designated commercial use. What you have before you is an opportunity to give more Angelenos a chance at homeownership, and at the same time, stimulating our local economy. As one of the architects of the Adaptive Reuse Ordinance, we at CCA have worked closely with the planning department to ensure that the package before you preserves the integrity of our local live-work regulations and has the flexibility for increased commercial use in the future. We thank you for your consideration and hope that you will speedily approve this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perez. We have Zuma Dog next, and then Stephen Appleton. Sorry, Ms. Zuma Dog, and then Stephen Appleton. You're on deck.
Yes, I'd like to spend a minute on this because we're talking about housing. I'm hearing the word loans. All I would like to say is, please, LA City, it says Planning Department here, you've done nothing but upscale housing. You've got HUD that announced they'll be cutting federal dollars, which will be directly affecting the Housing Authority. People are getting kicked out of their homes, citywide. You don't even realize, last week, when they announced the HUD money was getting cut, and that people are going to be getting kicked out of their homes. If you are in HUD housing, you will, at risk of getting kicked out of your home. It's going to be a tremendous wave of homelessness that's about to hit the streets, no more so than downtown. So I'd like to say, if you need loans, you better give them to these people, because all the downtown real estate has been going bankrupt. You heard of Fairfield Residential? It's gone bankrupt, and CalSTRS has had their investments wiped out. And you've heard of Murillo Maddox. I don't know what you people did, but I'm here to say that the LA real estate market is a Bernie Madoff scam that the pension investors have been a part of, that has the city treasury under attack, and now we are dealing with you having to give loans to the housing quarters. So it says right here, "For the work quarters." I want you to build low, don't build workforce housing. We need emergency housing, not workforce housing, because everybody's out of work. There is no workforce. They're all retiring. They're all being fired. Thousands of city workers getting, leaving the workforce. There is no more workforce. You're not going to have the automobiles repaired for the fire, for the police, for the garbage removal. And so I'm here to say, forget any housing. You know, I used to say you went all million-dollar luxury condos, and you've gone too much upscale and like just reduce it to regular workforce housing. Forget it. All you need to build is emergency housing, emergency shelters for the wave of homelessness that's coming, because you went all upscale with the housing, when you spent all the money and lost it on Wall Street, and were shady and corrupt and racketeering, and now we're left with nothing except firings and complete, again, complete loss of services, complete loss of services. And so please do something besides have book fair presentations.
Stephen Appleton is our next speaker. After that is E.T. Snell.
Let me recover my brain cells quickly. I'm an artist. I'm a professional artist, and I have worked in the city of Los Angeles for over 20 years now on public projects, community-based projects, educational projects, was a professor at Otis College for many years. I'm here to raise question about this ordinance, and specifically, here's my point. You know, we had this presentation about the Guadalajara Book Fair. Look at what comes from that book fair and how the cultural exchange aspect organizes itself around art. You know, there was a report from Otis College this last year on the creative economy. It results in a million direct and indirect jobs in Los Angeles, $140 billion in sales and receipts, and $5.1 billion in state and local taxes. So why am I concerned about this ordinance? I'm concerned because, as you heard the gentleman state, this ordinance is taking the adaptive reuse. It's taking what started as an artisan residency conditional use permit process and applying FHA guidelines in order to qualify buyers. I don't think anybody's opposed to that within the creative communities, but we are concerned that these percentages do not represent creative community use. In addition, could impact more intensive commercial development of live-work. Why can we not have a more broad percentage and apply, in the entitlement process, the opportunity for those projects that wish to qualify for this financing to designate it within those guidelines? Otherwise, I do believe this will result in less live-work spaces for artists, less commercial-intensive development of live-work, and with it, some loss of benefits that the thing is supposed to bring, such as reduced trips. By having a higher commercial percentage, you will gain more benefit and more flexibility for the creative economy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. E.T. Snell's next. After that is Tracy Stone.
My name is E.T. Snell. You start your clock before I start talking. You know, $18 parking across the street. You guys have closed the front door.
I'm sorry, sir. For general public comment, you can give general comments, but this is...
Well, I'm just saying how I got here.
So, under state law, we have to keep it on the topic that's before, so if you could please keep that.
You shouldn't be so manipulated. Mr. Garcetti, let us come up here. If I want to make, I'd listen to...
Sir, if you could address the council as a whole, we have the regulations right there. We're more than happy to hear your comments today.
And that's been a big problem. And, you know, I don't know if this is necessarily going to stimulate the economy relating to joint living and work quarters. I mean, me and my 15 kids move in there. Do you have the infrastructure, the parks, the grounds, the schools? Do you have, are you going to have just 15 kids running up and down a commercial zone? You know, I've got some concerns here. Thank you for listening, Mr. Alakon and Mr. Wesson. I appreciate your attention. I know you from years back. I guess Mr. Garcetti doesn't, so, you know, I have a tendency of, you know, covering a lot of areas like...
And I'll hold your time, sir.
Like Carmen, excuse...
Just one second. I'll hold your time. Don't worry, so it won't tick off. In general public comment, you can do all of those things, and we welcome you to give the kind of general comments during general public comments. But, sir, if you would please, for a second, hold. That is when you need to give general comments, and this is on a very specific item. Thank you.
I see you're not going to give me my two minutes, you know, but that's the way your father did it when he put me in the pin twice. Terrorist threats, they weren't complained about until six weeks after the ledge incident.
Sir, I'm sorry, you're off-topic, and that is the end of your time, sir. Okay, thank you very much. We welcome those sorts of comments about me, about anybody else, in general public comment, but right now, this is, this is on a very specific item right here, sir. And we welcome you to speak on that comment, but if you're off-topic, we have to hold that consistent because of state law. Tracy Stone is our next speaker. Thank you for your patience, Ms. Stone, and good to see you.
Good afternoon or good morning, honorable council members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I am an architect, and I live in a live-work space that I developed myself in Elysian Valley. And I think I was one of the early ones to use the ordinance in question. And I just wanted to address a couple of the specifics. I certainly have no intention of derailing this ordinance, but there are a couple of items I think could use some clarification. I have recently tried to apply the ordinance to the development of a small, true artist live-work project in Elysian Valley, which is Zoned CM. And under the proposed ordinance, in order to modify the amount of live-work space allocated to, within the building, and in order to modify the setbacks, I would have to go for a variance. The variance adds six to eight months to the process, and it adds $7,000, which is a rather large increase in permit fees for a true artist space. Artists, as you know, are not the wealthiest members of society, and there's a cap, really a market cap, on the amount of money that you can either sell or rent an artist space to, which means that the more you increase the cost of developing these spaces, the fewer true artist-type live-work spaces you will get. So my question is, number one, why are we limiting the amount of workspace to 25%? That's not a realistic figure for an artist studio. And my second question is, why are we requiring projects in the CM and the industrial zones to comply with the residential setback requirements? On a lot that is 40 by 120, that's a significant amount of non-buildable space. There is a workable solution. We have a list here, I think. Can I give that?
Sure, if you want to give that to the Sergeant Arms, we can make sure that gets circulated.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Tracy. Appreciate your comments. With that, I'll call on the Chair of our Plumb Committee as our first speaker from the council, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President and colleagues. This is an ordinance that is addressing some critical issues in regards to public safety, health codes. The, as a specific question, the 25% comes from that goal, to specify that live-work units are primarily residential with accessory commercial uses. The proposed ordinance therefore will remove an obsolete definition of live-work units, which currently define live-work as primarily commercial spaces with accessory living quarters. So we are creating the ability to essentially reinforce these kinds of standards to establish safety and health issues. The new definition will align the definition with current city policy that live-work units are subject to residential zoning and building code standards. This will enable buyers of live-work units to qualify for federal Housing Administration FHA insured loans, and as much as FHA loans are only available on properties that contain no more than 25% commercial space. There's quite a bit of work that's gone into this. I want to thank the planning department, and I encourage an a vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Garcetti. Thank you, Mr. Alakon.
If we could have staff join here, I'm, this 25% is troublesome to me as a max. If anything, I'd like to see more flexibility, particularly with artists. I don't know if there are certain job classifications we might want to exempt from this specific funding, but if the planning department could please explain to us how we came to 10% to 25% usable space. Please hold my time.
Hold the time.
Alan Bell, LA City Planning Department. If the council wants, I could provide some of the background information about this and how we arrived at this particular proposal that might help you get a sense of how to address this particular policy issue. The city council adopted the Adaptive Reuse Ordinance 10 years ago, and as a result of this ordinance, over 14,000 housing units have been constructed citywide, including 2,000 affordable units. Now, the authorization to adopt this particular ordinance was set forth in the Health and Safety Code, and we can adopt what are called alternative building standards based upon this Health and Safety Code. The Health and Safety Code defines a live-work unit as a residential occupancy with adequate working space set aside for live-work units, and it leads to the local governments the discretion to decide what is adequate. But what is key to understand here is the Health and Safety Code says these are primarily residential occupancies and must comply with residential standards. When we adopted the Adaptive Reuse Ordinance in 1999, we used the definition that was in the 1981 Artist Ordinance, which defined a live-work as 2/3 commercial and 1/3 live. Now initially, this caused some confusion for developers as to what standards apply, whether they are commercial or industrial, and ultimately, because these are primarily used as the residence for a family, we concluded that the residential standards would apply to these units and not the commercial standards. Now, the city's definition of a live-work unit is inconsistent with the Health and Safety Code. That did not cause any problems up until recently, when it was brought to our attention that that inconsistency triggered a problem with the Federal Housing Administration's guidelines on mortgage insurance. There's been some comments made about FHA mortgage insurance. FHA mortgage insurance is one of the underpinnings of the housing market, but FHA will not insure mortgages on properties that include more than 25% commercial space. And what FHA informed us is that they would not insure mortgages on any live-work units in the city of Los Angeles because of the city's Adaptive Reuse Ordinance. And so as a result, there are many live-work units that remain unsold in the city of Los Angeles, and it's this unsold inventory that has stalled the housing recovery during the economic recession. So what the ordinance does to solve this problem, as approved at the City Planning Commission, is that it amends the city's definition of live-work to be consistent with the Health and Safety Code. It mandates that at least 10% of the floor area be set aside for workspace, but no more than 25%. So it makes it primarily a residential space, which was intended by the Health and Safety Code, but it provides adequate working space for home occupations within the live-work space. Now, when this item was first heard by the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, some members of the public, and some of them are here today, testified that this was too restrictive for artists who may need more workspace. We listened to that particular concern, and the ordinance provides a mechanism to adjust upward on a case-by-case basis, the amount of workspace to go beyond 25%. So we can take a look at it when an application comes in to make sure that the amount that is requested is still consistent with our building code requirements, and more importantly, the Health and Safety Code, which is that this is a residential occupancy, so that we retain that. One of the things that's important to understand is that if you're going to build a live-work unit, you have to comply with residential standards. If you're going to build a commercial unit, you have to comply with commercial standards, and they're very different. You can certainly have more than 25% if you construct what's called a mixed-use building, which is simply a separate commercial space with a separate upstairs apartment. That can all be done, but the parking requirements for the commercial space will be parked at the parking rate. The fire life safety standards, requirements for disabled access will be set for the commercial space, so that way, someone can't use this as a loophole for getting around stricter commercial building code requirements. So on balance, this code amendment is really just a technical correction of an oversight that we should have made 10 years ago when we initially adopted the Adaptive Reuse Ordinance. It makes our definition consistent with the state code, and at the same time, it allows buyers of live-work units... buyers of live-work units to qualify for FHA insured mortgages. It also makes some technical corrections to the building code to make it consistent with this particular change, and Mr. Dave Laura is with me from the Building Department if there are any questions about that.
Okay. I understand the need to modify the ordinance from 66% so that we can define it as a livable space, but wouldn't 50% or 51% cover that?
I believe that at that point, you could no longer call it, under the Health and Safety Code, a residential occupancy.
If it were 51%?
I think then, at that point, it would no longer be considered an accessory use. That would be considered primarily a commercial use, and that would be inconsistent with the building code.
If the residential were 51%?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said the commercial part.
No. The residential.
Yeah. I think that one could consider going up to that amount.
Up to 49%, and we'd be consistent with the Health Code?
One could make that argument. Again, it is up to the discretion of the city to do that.
I got it. I got it. But 49% might -- would probably meet the standard for the definition of living quarters.
Yes, I agree with that.
Okay. The other concern with regard to FHA, why do we even involve ourselves with that? Shouldn't the market forces prevail? I mean, first of all, if somebody owns the property outright, then why would they have to worry about FHA?
The reason why is because of the critical role that FHA plays in the housing market. FHA ensures mortgages, and it removes some of the risk from a lender when it provides a loan to a buyer. So as a result, a buyer can qualify for a lower interest rate than they otherwise would.
What does that have to do -- what does that have to do with city planning? I mean, those are market forces.
It has everything to do with city planning because it puts a hole in the Adaptive Reuse Ordinance. It makes it much less effective than it otherwise would be. We have a tremendous number of unsold live-work units in the city of Los Angeles, and as a result, it is stalling the housing recovery. I think we estimated that within Los Angeles, because of our Adaptive Reuse Ordinance, that that--
But wouldn't the market correct itself? I mean, wouldn't the people that are building these units, wouldn't they change them to 25%?
No, because the FHA has informed the city that until we change our ordinance, they will not lend -- they will not insure mortgages on any live-work units in the city of Los Angeles.
Even if it's less than 25%?
Because our ordinance says that a minimum of 66% must be commercial. They have identified this as a problem in the city's Adaptive Reuse Ordinance.
But that's a different problem. They're not saying -- you're saying that the 66% is out. FHA won't lend.
Correct.
But if we changed it to 49%?
They still will not lend.
Even if the unit was 25%?
They will not lend on any property that has more than 25% workspace.
I said 25%. That's not more than 25%. It's 25%. Why wouldn't they lend?
Okay. Let me see if I understand this correctly. If the ordinance establishes a range that says 10% workspace and no more than 25% workspace, that is the proposed ordinance?
That's not what I'm talking about.
All right.
What I'm asking is, why wouldn't FHA lend if the space were 25%? I'm not talking about ordinance. What would prohibit them from lending?
25% what?
Commercial. Workspace.
They would not. They would lend on that.
So then why can't we say from 10% to 49%?
Because then the math doesn't work out. It would be--
What math?
The percentage of allowable workspace cannot exceed 25%.
Why?
That is FHA's lending guideline.
If somebody owned the property outright, and they could have a 49% commercial, we'd be in consistent with the Health and Safety Code, they wouldn't be worried about FHA, right? So we're prohibited -- by enacting this ordinance today, we'd be prohibiting that class of people from doing just that, right? So if an artist owns a loft, and 49% of it were used for their work, they wouldn't care about FHA?
That's correct.
So why are we trying to -- why are we -- it seems to me we are going to reduce the number of usable -- the amount -- first of all, we're reducing the amount of usable space. Secondly, we're reducing the group that we intended to do this for in the first place. So I don't get it. So what I would recommend, and we can go back to committee and rethink it, but it seems to me that if we said 10% to 49%, that FHA would lend. It would be the developers or the owners of these buildings' responsibility to conform to the 25% if their primary concern were FHA. But it may not be. They may be driving to another market to sell the whole building, and maybe they don't need FHA.
Thank you, Mr. Alacon. Mr. Reyes, just for a point.
Yes. Mr. Bell, I know we waved this out of committee because we went over in council and didn't have plum, like I need to have in 20 minutes.
Yes.
So what are our time constraints at this moment in dealing with this issue? Do we have any time constraints, any deadlines we have to meet?
Certainly, there are no legal time constraints.
Okay. Well, let me suggest this, because we did not have this discussion, because it did not come to committee, because we tried to move this forward as quick as possible. I will go ahead and recommend that we send it back to committee, since we did not have that discussion, and those who would have other recommendations, we would entertain them at that time and see if they can meet the objectives that we were trying to set in this run. So, Council President, I'd like to send this back to committee. I can fold in this information. Council Alacon, you can bring up your issues, and those who didn't get an opportunity to speak in committee, because we did not have it in committee, we can do it at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Thank you, Mr. Bell, everyone there. And then, Mr. Garcetti's off the crew. We have one public comment card for Van Nuys City Hall. Holly Schroder, if we could swing out to Van Nuys City Hall.
Good afternoon, Council Sergeant. I'm going to be with you in chamber. Holly Schroder with the Building Industry Association, and I appreciate the time to speak to this in committee, but if I might, just quickly, this is very important that we take quick action. It is stalling the recovery, as Mr. Bell said, because the units that are already built that are unsold are unable to be -- people are unable to get loans that are interested in those units. FHA, and perhaps this speaks to some of the questions, FHA looks to the rules of the city and the actual -- what is written in the ordinance. They do not verify on an individual unit-by-unit basis, and so it's imperative that the city act to amend this ordinance so that these units can qualify for FHA financing. This is really the only way that people can get loans today, the only way that we will allow these properties to be transferred to new homeowners that live in Los Angeles. In practice, it doesn't affect how these units are designed or how they are lived in or used today. It really has no effect. This is a definitional change, and if somebody wants to design something to have a higher commercial percentage, all it would mean is that they would not qualify for FHA financing. This is a very, you know, I view this as a technicality that needs to be amended, and I ask that as this goes back to committee, that we agendize it as quickly as possible so that we can move this forward. Thank you for your consideration and your time this afternoon.
And thank you, Ms. Schroder. We'll be going back to committee, and now we'll send that back to committee. Mr. Clerk, what's -- Madam Clerk, what's on the desk?
Item 8, I believe the amending motions have been circulated.
Okay. This is on a different item now?
Yes, item 8.
Okay. And Mr. Rosedal? Where item is before now, again, this is the -- Mr. Rosedal, these are the items you asked.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and you look good up there, you know? We just want to bring back motion 8-B that has been modified for council consideration. And obviously, colleagues, it ensures the use of musical instruments and all amplified sounds. That is discontinued at sunset until 9:00 a.m. It ensures that large act performers rotate their space in a timely manner. C, there's an option to either have a lottery or not have a lottery. We want to continue to work on that, and we obviously want D, which is to ensure the existence of emergency and non-emergency ingress and egress between the beach and the boardwalk is prohibited so you can have access. This motion, 8-B, signed by myself and Mr. Labonte, I'd like unanimous support on this.
Thank you very much. No one's on the speakers' queue, so Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that goes forward. Next item, please.
Item 36, called "Special for Cards."
Okay, item number 36. Do you have the cards? Item 36 is before us, and I have no cards in this. Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Item 36 is an effort to essentially allow for compatibility in the corridor that is found in districts 1 and 13, that essentially runs along Cypress Park and Glazier Park, community-designed overlay district. It's to regulate auto-related, auto-oriented, and other incompatible uses. As such, we've had several community meetings. This work has gone on for several years. It's been hashed out thoroughly by the various stakeholders, and today it's trying to impose these queue conditions that allows us to meet the objectives of the overlay district, and I would ask for an aye vote.
Thank you. We have some public cards, comment cards. David Saltzman is not in the room. Okay, his time is up. Dr. Clyde Williams, please.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Surino, LA 32 Neighborhood Council. One of the elements here is the coordination between the planning department, DOT, and the Bureau of Engineering, because there are projects going -- huh? Or -- all right, okay. Because there are projects going on along San Fernando Road through Cypress Park, Glazier Park, and we're quite concerned that this particular item is a negative declaration, whereas we find it rather incomplete and inadequate as to the effects that this will have upon traffic, parking, and barriers between the residential communities and the LA River. So we would like to see more detail, more information regarding this, and not to have it passed over as a negative declaration. Do not adopt it. I have -- there's also a matter that it's -- the motion includes monitoring of mitigation measures. You cannot have mitigation measures in a negative declaration. It's called mitigated negative declaration. Therefore, it's incomplete, inadequate, and should be sent back. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Next, we have a card from Representatives of Union Pacific Railroad, which has four names. If I could ask, Ms. Valdez, Mr. Randolph?
Yes. Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Lupe Valdez. I'm here representing Union Pacific Railroad. We are working with city staff, city planning staff. There was an error that was placed as part of this that had incorporated UP land at Taylor Yard as public land, and city planning will be working on rectifying that to make sure that it goes to private property ownership as opposed to public land. So that's why we're here.
Thank you very much. Very good. I appreciate that. Mr. Reyes, if you have public comments close, we'll turn it over to staff.
Yes. Essentially, if there's anything else that needs to be added by -- could you turn the microphone, please?
My name is Jose Carlos Romero. I'm the Northern City Planner, and I prepared this case for your consideration. In regards to the negative declaration, there is actually no construction whatsoever in this project, so there is no impact. In -- now, there was a significant outreach to the community in the Cypress Park, in Glazier Park, Neighborhood Councils. We had meetings, and there was input from them, and so our recommendation is to approve this project. In relation to the parcels that may be owned, they are owned or may be owned by Union Pacific, I was approached yesterday by the representatives, and they provided information to me, which will be verified. So as soon as this information is verified, if there is an error, we will do a correction ordinance, and so -- but in the case, we recommend approval of this case.
All right. Thank you very much. So now this item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item, please.
And, Mr. President, that ordinance will go over for second reading to January 5th.
January 5th. Thank you very much.
And next item is 37, called "Special for Cards."
Gentlemen, Mr. Saltzman is not here at this time, so we'll note it. And no card before us. Let's have this item before us now. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next item.
Item 38, called "Special for Cards."
This is again a card by Mr. Saltzman. He's not here, so open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Next item is 44, called "Special for Cards."
Dr. Clyde Williams. Dr. Williams, last call for Dr. Williams is out. Note it for the file. David Saltzman, not here. That's the only two cards I got. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 48, called "Special for Cards."
Again, Mr. Saltzman, not here. John Walsh, please.
I never leave to the bitter end. HollywoodHighlands.org blogging. McCormick Baron is this developer. Now, this is the same -- this is transit-oriented or transit-disoriented development. It has not worked. Take a look at the W Hotel. 10 times more traffic than before they built the subway at Hollywood and Vine. This is another building around the subway, but it never happens. McCormick Baron was supposed to build a gigantic, low-cost, moderate housing development around McCarthy Park Station. Is it there?
44.
No, it's not there, because the deal -- didn't the deal fall through? But a lot of people made money out of it. Read it all on HollywoodHighlands.org. One minute.
Thank you very much. On this item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And, members, there's a consideration, reconsideration for item 55. Get over the roll for reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, on item 55 is now before us. Mr. Alacon?
Yes, members, this is -- I introduce a motion to essentially try to find a way to restore vote-by-mail options for the Neighborhood Council system. The report really doesn't get to the heart. The instructions in the motion were to report back to the council on steps necessary to fully restore vote-by-mail. That still remains my goal. Right now, there's an exemption for people who have, I think the word was obvious, disabilities, which I don't know what that is, but it doesn't allow for vote-by-mail process in our Neighborhood Council system for anybody other than disabled folks by their definition. So I would still like to see the vote-by-mail. I understand there's $250,000 in the city clerk's budget to do the vote-by-mail, and I don't-- budget to do the vote-by-mail, and I don't understand why it's been so limited. So if we could have the city clerk explain this issue.
Thank you very much. Trina Legmay, City Clerk, and with me is Holly Walcott, Executive Officer for the City Clerk. In putting together the city clerk's budget for the 2010 Neighborhood Council elections, we came in with a larger figure than the current economic climate would allow, and we were instructed to try and find portions of that budget that could be trimmed down so that we could operate it on a much more pragmatic, bare-bones type of way. Let there be no question, the city clerk is very supportive of vote-by-mail on a comprehensive basis. We have always encouraged that, and especially encouraged permanent vote-by-mail in our regular municipal elections. But in order to accommodate a reduction in budget, we put together a package of cuts in about 1.74 million. Part of that was giving back $450,000, which would have paid—which would have gone toward a comprehensive vote-by-mail program. So another way to say it is, we had originally said we need $600,000 plus to offer vote-by-mail for all the Neighborhood Council elections. We will give back $450,000 of it back to the general fund, which leaves us with about $200,000, and that amount is specific to voters with physical disabilities, as was encouraged to us by the city attorney, that we must be able to offer voting access for those who are physically incapable of going to the polls. To make a long story short, this precluded us from doing comprehensive vote-by-mail for all the Neighborhood Councils, and in order for us to be able to do that, even though it's quite late in the game, we would essentially need that $450,000 restored back to the budget.
How many—how many vote-by-mails would you anticipate if it were open?
That is impossible to say. I can tell you from the 2008 cycle that we operated, we had something like—I don't have the number of applications, but actual vote-by-mails in 2008 was 2,800.
Twenty-eight hundred?
And we spent $350,000 in 2008 for a comprehensive vote-by-mail.
And how many—
2,800 vote-by-mails were returned.
And how many Neighborhood Councils did that involve?
Do we have that stat? Twenty-two councils, yes.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two Neighborhood Councils. We are now doing eighty-nine for this coming year before us.
So it's—it costs—how much per ballot?
A hundred and twenty-five.
How much?
A hundred and twenty-five dollars per completed vote-by-mail ballot in 2008. Vote-by-mail is very expensive. It is much more expensive than that poll voting.
Where—is the primary cost?
The primary cost?
Is it mailing?
Let me look at our links. Can you—can you—
A hundred and twenty-five, you could pretty much get in your car and deliver a ballot and get somebody to vote that way. I'll do it. There's a lot—there's a lot of city employees who are retiring who'd love to do that. They'll do it for fifty bucks.
It is a combination of as needed labor costs, such as our chief election clerk, the principal election clerks, the senior election clerks, intermediate election clerks, overtime costs, postage, equipment leases, vehicle rental, printing, supplies, paper and toner. And this would simply be to prepare the eighty-nine Neighborhood Councils for applying and receiving a vote-by-mail.
So you—you have—and by the way, you described the disabled folks as people with physical disabilities, and I believe you used the words "that were apparent."
I don't think I used the word—
Oh, I saw it in the report. Maybe I'm wrong, but—I'm pretty—
The idea would be for those who are physically unable to get to the polls, it would also include those for whatever religious reasons could not vote on that day.
Well, that's the whole purpose of vote-by-mail, is they can't vote otherwise.
Why? But it would not include those, for example, who were on vacation.
Why not? Aren't they entitled to vote?
We agree that vote-by-mail is a desirable process, but it—it costs money, and this was part of the dollars that we returned to the city in order to bring down the budget for—
So if somebody wants to vote for me and they're on vacation, they can vote for me. But if somebody wants to vote in their Neighborhood Council and they want to take a vacation, they have to cancel their vacation plans?
Their only recourse—
Apparently, yes.
—would be to vote at the polls, correct?
Yeah, I just—I just think there's something unrighteous about that. We have a miserable turnout. How much does it cost for a regular vote in the Neighborhood Council system?
We'd have to get back to you. We haven't calculated that.
It's probably about the same amount. But the cost to—to run these elections is much higher than what was projected originally. And I just—I just—I really think we need to have this option available to everybody. First of all, I'm not exactly sure how you're discriminating here. I mean, how are you going to identify—
They would be self-affirmed, either disabled, or they would be self-affirmed that for religious reasons they could not make it to the polls.
And say that again?
They would be self-self-affirmed. They would declare that they are under the penalty of a jury that they are either disabled or for religious reasons could not vote on that day.
Well, I for one believe that we should offer the vote-by-mail option to the Neighborhood Councils. The money was set aside, $250,000. I don't understand why the cost per vote is $125, and why we can't do a system that allows for people to vote by mail.
Unfortunately, the election staff that was here earlier, that could walk you through the entire process of what it takes to process each application, had other obligations this afternoon. We can report back on that process. However, what we cannot do is operate a full-scale Neighborhood Council vote-by-mail unless the funds are restored.
Mr. Alacón, you think we should send this back to committee?
That would be fine with me. I'd be happy to talk to the chair about it, but my point is, I think we need to have the—the vote-by-mail process in place, and I thought we funded it, and it went away, and I don't—I don't know where it went away.
Our—our report was quite—quite clear on the subject that it was not.
Which report?
Both of our two status reports on— August 5th and May 15th, 2009.
It was after I was on the committee, so I did not get that information.
I think it would be a good thing to send it back to education and neighborhoods since there seemed to be some—
I will—I will communicate with the chair at that point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a card on it right here from Pat Patterson. Direct that. Pat Patton. Pat Patton. Mr. Patton is not here. We're going to note the card. This is for item fifty-five. So, Mr. Garcetti, we're going to send this back to committee. Neighborhood and education by rule of the chair. So ordered. I need to reconsider item number forty-four. Madam Clerk, can we reconsider item forty-four? Hold on. Hold on a second, Madam Clerk. Take item—I—you give me a little help there, Mr. Speaker. Fifty-four, please. Item—a consideration for item fifty-four. You betcha.
And item fifty-four was called "Special for Cards."
Yeah, Mr. Walsh and Mr. Saltzman, they're not here. We note them. Mr. Walsh, you're back inside. I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh. One minute on your clock, Mr. Walsh.
That's wishful thinking. Skate Plaza. You know, we talk about wasting money. We have enough skate—we have to have a skate moratorium in this city. People are—the other day, just yesterday, a bag lady comes up to me. They asked me for 50 cents. She's carrying all her—her clothing in a bag. I said, "I gave her quarter." It—it was Chris Essel. Can you believe it? It was actually Chris Essel out there begging money.
Mr. President—
Thank you, Hollywood High—
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, item forty-four for reconsideration on missed card. Mr. Reyes.
Council President, it's almost supposed to start at 1:30, so we will start from fifteen minutes after the end of council, so we can just hold tight.
Great. We'll be all done real soon. Thank you. Okay, for reconsideration, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. In the valley, we have Donna Perelman.
Perelman. My name is—name is Perelman. Anyway, I didn't think I was going to go in here. I thought you were going to go in recess right now. Anyway, I wanted to think while you're being on recess, consider ways to save money for the general fund. Make the sanitation and public works free preparatory—that's free from the general fund, which the D.W. key gets, and I just want to say that I don't want to break up the D.W., please—DWP. Please don't break up the DWP.
Mr. President, she doesn't have a free to be talking about— Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Perelman. Have a good afternoon. And now, we have with us here Mr. Snell for public comment, please, on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge, for allowing me to speak and open up public comment to me since it was previously closed. I don't know which one of the individuals passed my card up, but it's pretty hard to try to miss somebody, and my antennas are—
Mr. President, he's not talking about this item.
Thank you very much. Please direct it to the chair on the item, sir.
Well, you know, Mr. Labonge, you know, let's get an even playing field so we can start—you know, because freedom of speech is a very important thing to me, and I've been involved in political activism—
Mr. President, he's not talking about item number forty-four, and this is a limited public forum. Please—
Mr. Snell, do you want to address the item? Please address the item.
Chief Legislative Analyst. You know, the—here's the guys—that—the chief legislative analysts that work for you guys, and then all of a sudden, now we want summer recess to August 24th. I can see that. September 3rd, I can see that. Winter recess, December 21st. Of course, that's the end of the Mayan calendar, and it's also my birthday. Little spooky there. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, but we have to stick at comments, sir. It's not like the old days—
Please address the chair, sir. Please address the chair.
Thank you, mister— The profession—these guys were voted in. I come here to speak on the issues, and if I want to tie in some of the things where I've been, or some of the things like the arsenic in the water, you know, I should be able to tie it in. Who's not doing their job and what? You know? You know, this analyst, chief legislative analyst, who I'm understanding is paid by you guys, works for you guys, all of a sudden, that's no problem. Why don't we give off, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six more days off? I only see three people here right now, so it probably wouldn't mean much to take another twenty—
Thank you very much, Mr. Snell. Mr. Miller for technical amendment.
Yeah, it's just a typo. On the winter recess, it's Tuesday, 12:21, not Friday. So the—the date of the winter recess is Tuesday, 12:21 through Friday, 12:31.
Thank you. Correct that, Mr. Clerk. Any items before us?
Mr. President, do you need a vote on that?
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item fifty, called "Special for Cards."
Mr. Saltzman. Mr. Saltzman is not here. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
So ordered. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, there is a special one, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney—
Thank you, Mr. President. I will cite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Applications for the state, municipal, and commercial building targeted measure retrofit program funds are due December 21st during the council recess. Since the posting of today's agenda, council staff has determined that a resolution also is required to be submitted by that date. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substance of motion.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, thank you for that explanation. No speakers on the queue. Mr. Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
So ordered. Next item.
Mr. President, that was on the findings. Now the matter is before council.
Okay. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item.
And, Mr. President, all items today do go forthwith.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and all those members of the clerk's office. Next item.
Mr. President, there are—council has motions for posting an infill.
So ordered.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused January 6th and 8th, and to leave at 11:30 on January 15th, all for city business, and that meets council policy.
Approved.
Councilmember Coetz, requests to be excused to leave at 2:00 p.m. on January 8th, February 12th, April 9th, May 14th, for city business. That all meets council policy.
Approved.
And Councilmember Garcetti, requests to be excused January 26th, 27th, February 2nd, 3rd, 5th, 9th, 10th, and 12th, for personal business. That meets council policy.
Approved.
That clears the desk.
Okay. Any other announcements? Announcements? No announcements? Any adjourned motions? Let's rise for adjourned motions, please. Ms. Perry.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I would like to include Ms. Han, Mr. Parks, and Mr. Wesson on this turning of motion in memory of Avery Clayton, who was born in Los Angeles on March 17, 1947, and he passed away November 26, 2009, at the age of 62. And some of you may have been familiar with his mother, Mamie Clayton. Avery Clayton's mother was the daughter of the only African-American merchant in Van Buren, Arkansas, and she grew up with a strong awareness of African-American achievements. So as a child, Avery didn't pay much attention to his mother's hobby of collecting memorabilia, but then later carried on the work of his mother, Mamie Clayton, by establishing a library and museum in Culver City for her major collection of African-American artifacts. Avery served in the Army during the Vietnam War, and upon returning home in 1967, he studied at Los Angeles City College and graduated with a bachelor's degree in art from UCLA. He taught in public schools and was a guidance counselor, and he produced his own pen and ink drawings and distributed his own greeting cards. Over the last three years, Avery Clayton dedicated himself to raising the funds needed to open the library museum to the public in 2010 or 2011, and the family has asked that in lieu of flowers, that contributions be made to the Mamie A. Clayton Library Museum. The funeral service will be held Saturday, December 19th, at 10:00 a.m. at Agape International Spiritual Center.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in memory of Joyce Daisy Crane. Daisy Crane is what she was known by all of us who just loved her dearly. She unexpectedly died last Wednesday. She was many things to the Pacific Palisades community. She was a writer, an artist, an actor, a community activist, an educator, a journalist, historian, a political involved person, and a big supporter of the LAPD for the last thirty-one and a half years. Daisy was funny, highly motivated, and she became a forceful leader in the Palisades. Most recently, we were setting it up with her to schedule her display of her incredible artwork at our city's West Los Angeles Municipal Building. Daisy had been working with me and my staff to set up her own very art exhibit, in which she was planning to release some of her new work. The new work would have included portraits of many of our very own LAPD officials. Just about a month ago, I held a community meeting with her, and not only was she funny, but we talked about very serious issues, but with a positive attitude about it. Boy, we need more of that around here. She's survived by her son, Andrew, and the plans are pending a memorial service that will be arranged by the family, and it'll be held in the Palisades. May she rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosenthal. Any other members here? I have a—someone I want to adjourn in memory of, Bob Keen, who was the founder of West Coast Independent Delphi Records, who discovered Ritchie Valens. He succumbed at a livingness home in Hollywood. He survived by his wife, Diane, and his three sons and daughters. I ask to adjourn in memory of Bob Keen. Also, members, I ask to adjourn in memory of David Stone, who was retired Navy— Also, members, I ask to be adjourned in memory of David Stone, who was a retired Navy Admiral, who became the first federal security director at Los Angeles International Airport. He was much-loved, died at the early age of 57. He's a former head of the Transportation Security Administration. Also, members, I'd like to ask to be adjourned in memory of Carrie Stickley, who was much-loved, Toluca Lake resident, member of the Toluca Lake Garden Club, tragically evicted to cancer. And finally, I ask to be adjourned in memory of Council General Vitas Kalas, very special honorary Council General of Lithuania for over 32 years, was appointed to post in 1977, was involved with our sister-city relationship as well. I ask to be adjourned in memory of Vitas Kalas. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. The meeting of the city council on this day is adjourned.